Okay, good evening, everybody. It's 6:05. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation led by Vice Mayor Smith, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Parker. Please rise as you're able.
Before I begin, I'd like to take a moment of silence to recognize the passing of Mayor Tyree. So if you would, one minute of silence.
Tonight we gather to represent Knoxville residents to the best of our ability. As a community, we aim for thoughtful progress where we listen too well to one another. In the words of St. Francis Assisi, "Make us an instrument for peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy." Amen.
Please face the flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilman Fugit.
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley.
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Rider.
Here.
Councilwoman Roberto.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Thomas. All members are present, Mayor.
Okay, wonderful. And I also just want to take a moment to recognize we have five incoming council members represented today. If you all would please stand and, you know, thank you for being here and congratulations. And in a few short weeks, you'll have your chance to, you had your chance to campaign in poetry, and then you'll get to govern in prose. And now you get to a little dose of the prose part of the job. So anyhow, congratulations, and I look forward to working with all of you. But we still have two more meetings with this group of council members, and we'll move forward with our work this evening. First, is there a motion on the minutes of the last meeting?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items on tonight's agenda to be withdrawn? Are there any items to be postponed? Are there any items to be added by motion? Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember.
I was going to announce to council, we do have a speaker signed up on a consent item, item 10, excuse me, 13A.I.
12A.I.
12A.I. Old severe liquors?
Yes, that's correct.
That was.
So we'll pull that from consent.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to.
If someone signed up, do we need to make a motion to?
A member of council needs to remove it.
Okay.
It seems that that's done.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to remove 12A.I. from the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion made to remove 12A.I. from consent has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other items to be removed from consent?
Yes, Mayor.
Of Vice Mayor Smith.
I'll make a motion to remove 12, or excuse me, 10H. I'd like to have a brief discussion about that.
Okay, motion made to remove 10H from the consent agenda has been made. Is there a second? Or do we need a second for that?
You don't need a second.
Okay. Okay, then, do we even need to vote on it?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, then it's back on. I don't know why we voted on the last one. I'm sorry, I'm just getting used to the.
Still new, still new.
There's new rules. They're working great, I'm just getting used to the flow. Any other items to be removed from consent before we vote on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda as amended, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Time now for my mayor's report. As Vice Mayor Smith noted, we all begin this evening with a heavy heart. Knoxville lost, just yesterday, a true champion and a strong leader. Mayor Randy Tyree passed away yesterday. He was mayor of our city from 1976 to 1984, and among many other parts of his accomplishments and legacies, he's credited with working tirelessly to bring the World's Fair to our city in 1982. I know many of you have had opportunities to get to know Mayor Tyree over the years, even probably before you took office, but certainly since then, and we all really appreciate all that he's done for our city, both while he was in office and in his many years following that. I remember Mayor Tyree as a friend and mentor. He was also just always great to be around, so positive, always quick with a smile and a word of encouragement, and I just want to let his family know how much the city and we personally appreciate his service and leadership. He will be greatly missed. And I'll be sure to let council members know, if there are public arrangements, we'll be sure to let everybody know. Also, this is Thanksgiving week, so I want to take a moment to just let you know, this current council, we've been through a lot together, and I'm really thankful for your public service. I know we have this meeting and one other, and I know four of you are going to continue, but it's not easy to be an elected official and to do this work. You can't please everybody, and you sometimes displease some people, and they let us know. But I really appreciate, I know that the people of the city are fortunate to have you in service, and I'm thankful to be working alongside you. So I hope you all get a chance to rest and relax and catch up with friends and family over this Thanksgiving Day holiday. Right after Thanksgiving, well, we kicked off Christmas in the city at Chauhawi Park last Friday, which was really fun. It was a little wet at the beginning, but it didn't keep people away. I was able to join Santa there to light the Christmas tree and listen to some carols, and of course, one of the most popular things was the Toucha Truck. It's really a lot of fun. But the celebration continues this Friday, regal celebration of lights. I hope to see many of you there for the lighting of the tree in Crouch Park. There will also be music, food, crafts, fireworks, Santa, and more, and like almost all of our city events, it's free and open to the public. We hope everyone can come out and join us. As we go into the holiday season, we also recognize that we have people struggling to keep food on the table and pay their bills, so I want to thank City Council and the United Way for supporting our emergency ordinance for food distribution. Thanks to your action, the United Way matched our contribution and has already turned around that $200,000 and gotten it to nine organizations that serve people who are hungry right here in our city. So even though the government shutdown is over, obviously the need is still there. Our food pantries have been greatly depleted, and these funds will go to help replenish them. So thank you for that. A reminder about our rules of decorum. We are here to do the city's official business. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum, need to sign up with the city recorder before 4:00 p.m. Do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, you must stay on topic. Remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly, that is, statements must have a bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules will be ruled out of order. For those who are listening, please note, if you disrupt a public meeting, you will be asked to leave or escorted out. Thank you in advance for respecting these rules, and that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports of committees or council members serving on committees or boards? Miss, Councilmember Helsley, your light's on, but you're not, it's not picking up somehow. So maybe try it again.
Oh, I hit it wrong, sorry.
Okay. No, it's not working.
No.
There we go. Okay.
Crazy lighting.
Anyway, the KTA board met on Thursday, and because of a driver shortage, which has to
do with complicated non-domicile changes on the CDL route, CDL license at the federal level, they have a shortage right now of drivers, so hopefully that'll be rectified in the next few months. And on a good note, the downtown connector is on a trial. It's going to be free for the next six months, so hit the downtown connector and shop.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Helsley. Councilmember Rider?
Yeah, there seems to be a lot of excitement that five of us are leaving, and before we get too ahead of ourselves, oh, oh, there's sadness too, okay. Anyway, I just want to put a couple of reminders out there that there is a December Beer Board meeting on December night, so you have to, and I know, you have to go through that one more time, the public gets an additional opportunity for beer permits, and then I do want to also, I'm going to get a little ahead of us here, we also have Audit Committee meeting on December 17th. So some of us are going to be working till the end, so just want to put that out there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rider, any other reports from council? Any other general council member announcements? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, Mayor, happy to announce that we broke ground on a new greenway extension last week. This one will link Adair Park in Fountain City and the Sioux-Clancy Greenway to sections further south, and most importantly, it will allow safe bicycle and pedestrian access underneath and beyond the 640 bypass. This section is half mile long and an important link to existing and future improvements along First Creek and in front of the Broadway Shopping Center. Many thanks to Fred Berry and the management of Lynn Hurst Cemetery for working with us on a beneficial public use of that property. And that concludes my council report.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo condolences in the passing of former Mayor Randy Tyree, and just to say that he was very special to my family. When my dad came, brought his young family here in the late '60s to open the Urban League, was then Officer Tyree, and he'd often tell me stories, and my mother would as well, about how closely he worked with my dad during those times. There was a lot of racial tension that was going on across our city, and Mayor Tyree had told me once that he could go into places that most white people weren't able to go into because my dad would introduce him as his brother, and he'd take my dad to places that most black people weren't welcome in and would introduce my dad as his brother, and then together were working to really improve race relations in our city, and will always be very grateful. He actually spoke at my dad's funeral as well and shared with me the eulogy and other remarks that he had made and some different news articles along the way, and so just my condolences to he and his family in our city as lost a great person. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to just say very few words about Mayor Tyree. I had gotten to know him, I think, well over the years. In fact, when I worked for the state in my first job that I ever had, I got to know him in that capacity to some degree. He was always very cheerful, always such a nice person, and ever since then, I've only grown to feel warmer feelings for him because he's always been such a kind person. Had a great smile, he would always show his smile to everyone, and I will just really miss seeing him because he was just such a nice person and just really committed to Knoxville and trying to make our community a better place, so I just want to say that as well. So I feel, I feel, I feel that loss, and I think we all do. The other thing I wanted to mention, Mayor, is this council has done a lot with regard to mental health services in our community, and in particular, we had spearheaded some work on trying to bring a mental health hospital back to Knoxville. And I wanted to give you a little report on how that is going. In the last week, the state is having their budget discussions, where the commissioners are coming in suggesting their budgets. Last week, in a public meeting, I wanted to, I'm pleased to tell you that the Commissioner Williams, the Commissioner of the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services, introduced Phase One funding request for a mental health hospital in our area. That is $8,541,000 in reoccurring funds and $12 million in non-reoccurring funds, for a total of $20,541,000 in a total request in 2026, and I think that's fantastic, but that is a request. It is not in the budget. And so what I wanted to mention to our council members, I'm glad our future council members are here and the public, is I think everybody wants to see the return of the mental health hospital in our community, and we all need to be talking to our representatives about making sure that this actually gets funded in the budget. This will help continue, to complete the continuum of care, and will give us more than 23-hour services that we can provide for uninsured folks in our community beyond what we're already doing with Bihak and with EMPATH, and so I think this is a fantastic development, and I just wanted to let you all know that we have gotten to that point, but we have a little further to go, so hopefully, you know, everyone else can continue to talk about the need here, and we can get this over the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of running to the finish line, the night before our last meeting, on December 8th at Kerbella Temple, SKNBC will host a community event to discuss the Down River Master Plan. So this is the area along the Tennessee River on the South Waterfront down Blount Avenue. So for a couple of years now, the community's been weighing into what that can be, now that the city has stepped in to procure that land. So please come, it's open to the public, Kerbella Temple, December 8th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. to discuss the Down River Master Plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other comment, announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda.
8B is a resolution confirming the reappointment of Sarah Glass, Ashley Ramos, and Heidi Oierazdick, and the appointment of Sergeant Christopher Williams to the Knoxville Animal Control Board.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any members of the Animal Control Board present? Well, thank you for your service, even if you're not here. Okay, next item, please.
9C is a resolution confirming the reappointments of Melissa Hinton, Brian O'Connor, Charlotte Rodina, Jessica Rodiker, and Kayla Stewart, and the appointment of Greg Austin, Sophie Carter, and Lakeisha Johnson to the Knoxville Tree Board.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there some members of the Tree Board present tonight? I was told some of the, okay. Well, thank you for service, and I appreciate your colleagues as well. Next item, please.
10D is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code, Appendix B zoning code, Article 2, general definitions and measurement methodologies, Article B, residential neighborhood districts, Article 9, uses, Article 10, site development standards, and Article 11, off-street parking, decreed a new use, single-family attached dwellings, Knoxville-Knox County planning applicant, all districts.
Okay, council members, we have people signed up to speak in favor and against this, so we'll start with the people signed up to speak in favor. First is Sarah Duggar. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record, and you have up to three minutes to address council.
I'm Sarah Duggar. I live at 5519 Beverly Square Way in Fountain City. Good evening. I'm going to be brief, I won't need my three minutes. I've been in Fountain City for over 45 years, and I love the diversity of our community. So I'm here to speak in favor of the amendment to the zoning code regarding single-family attached dwellings. Passing this amendment would create more opportunities for home ownership. I know there are people who don't like duplexes for various reasons. There are details which need to be resolved regarding driveways, curb cuts, party walls, but these are solvable problems. Vacant lots which dot our area provide opportunities for this type of housing, which is needed and that would not overburden our schools or infrastructure. Housing that would help fill a gap in the market. Housing for those who may not need or want a single-family house. The needs of the citizens in our community and the opportunities that will be created by this zoning change outweigh the issues. I thank you for your consideration of this issue, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak in favor of item 10D is Suzanne Stevens. Ms. Stevens, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Stevens or Sue Stevens. I live at 3930 Valley View Drive, 37917. Many people want to or have to live in subdivisions and neighborhoods where the design of the houses look pretty much the same. All ranchers or single-family two-story homes with bonus rooms above the attached garage and so on. While this is pleasing to many and even to me, I also find it very regimented and restrictive. Sometimes it is very disorienting to go into one of these neighborhoods and try to find the house you're looking for. I live in an older neighborhood where there is a wide range of home structures, some very old and some much newer. I find it more interesting, and even though some do not suit my taste, I'm okay with that. These neighborhoods, like mine, like my house, hold a variety of households. Since this RN1 and RN2 issue has come up, I have noticed duplexes in my area. Just driving down Fairmont Boulevard, there are quite a few duplexes that I never really paid attention to. Most are well over 50 years old, they're well-built and well-maintained, they have diverse designs, separate driveways, and add to the overall good feeling of the neighborhood. And I doubt their neighbors' property values have decreased. The proposed RN1 and RN2 zoning changes would add the option in neighborhoods for more home ownership that many people are asking for and needing, such as seniors who want to downsize and live near their children, single working people, and families with children. It's another option for home ownership that could help many. These proposed zoning changes still maintain the single-family, low-density designation. City staff and planning commission work together to address the growing need for home ownership. Please support these zoning changes so that we can make better use of the land, have more housing options, and create another path to home ownership. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Third speaker in favor of item 10D is Drew Harper. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hey, I'm Drew Harper. I live at 1205 Kenyon Street. I am speaking in support of single-family attached housing on behalf of Yes Knoxville. We support greater housing options, better transportation options, and better public spaces. I wanted to focus on, we are intentional about that word, "options," right? And I try to like say that when I'm here, like we do housing options, transportation options, public space options, because it's not a, there's not a blueprint, there's not specific things. We're looking for all of the above, you know, different things for different people. People have different wants, different needs, and that's why when we come here, we try to say "options" or "choices" or, you know, something like that, because we're, and this amendment, I think, is particularly relevant to that. The allowing people to purchase their unit in a duplex is an option. They don't have to, they don't have to be built, and right now, it's an option that we don't have. Every duplex in the city is either two rentals, or you live in one, you rent the other, and I've had friends that have done that, I've done that, a version of that, and this would allow more people to become homeowners if they want to. I think it's important, another thing that we try to do as Yes, and sorry if you're tired of seeing us, but is advocating for people that aren't in this room, right? Advocating for people that don't live in Knoxville yet, or people that are in high school and are about to graduate and want to move out of their parents' house, and I personally have helped a lot of people find housing over the past couple of years that are in very strange situations, and I'll give you some of those later, but there's some, I mean, when you're in kind of the housing space, you hear these crazy stories of, "My girlfriend blocked my number and I have nowhere to live," or a couple relocating from Queens that are retiring here, and they need, they have all kinds of different needs. And approving this amendment would add one more option to our housing buffet. We would, of course, like to see that continue to grow and continue to diversify. This is one small step that I encourage you to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the people who signed up to speak in opposition to item 10D. First is Stuart O'Gwin. Stuart O'Gwin?
Please.
Okay. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
My name is Stuart O'Gwin. I live in West Hills. My daughter lives in West Hills as well, and unfortunately, I have to admit some ignorance. By the way, right now I'm transitioning from Hemingway to Santa Claus. That's why I look, but I truly misunderstood what it was, but I just, let me say a quick word about any measures or any actions that you folks take, no matter how well-intentioned, consider, I come from Southern California, I've been here 10 years, I lived my whole life there. Southern California now is 236 miles of dense suburbs and cities from Santa Barbara to the Mexican border. And what caused that, a lot of it, is changes in ordinances that affected density with good intentions, but they have boiled the frog there. So all I'm asking is, when you look at the long-term possible effects of any little thing, any little step down that slope regarding density, just look to the future, to your kids and your grandkids. In Southern California, you look over, there's the ocean there, and there's the mountains there, and there is no more room unless you want to live out in the desert. So there's sort of an excuse, but I can go up in the sun sphere, and I don't see an ocean in either direction or the mountains, and I think it'd be nice to consider retaining the character of Knoxville for the long term. And as far as maybe this particular issue and other zoning issues, consider compromise on them, that maybe this, the same ordinance shouldn't apply to established neighborhoods like Knox Hills, like West Hills, I'm sorry, but for new construction and for the benefit of developers, because they certainly want this type of thing. But in West Hills, I can only think of one or two duplexes in the whole area, and so it really doesn't apply to us, and yet it seems to be, like other ordinances, shoved down our throat, one size fits all. So just consider that that's a reasonable compromise to exempt areas that are established that really, and West Hills has certainly expressed themselves, don't want increase in density in our neighborhood. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person is Larry Silverstein. Mr. Silverstein, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
Larry Silverstein, 7808 Sheffield Drive, 37909. I'm speaking as chairperson of Community Forum. We again request that zoning districts RN1 and RN2 be deleted from the single-family attached dwelling ordinance. Single-family attached dwellings do not fit the purpose, character, and typical design of RN1 and RN2 districts. The three peer jurisdictions allow single-family attached dwellings only in zoning districts that allow townhouses. Our RN1 and RN2 do not allow townhouses. Single-family attached dwellings are very different from attached houses prior to recode as they required a minimum of three acres, allowed up to 12 attached dwellings, and were not allowed in RN1 and RN1E, the zoning districts that are now RN1 and RN2. There was no discussion at Agenda Review or Planning Commission meetings about this key information. Instead, it was insisted that what was proposed just reestablished what existed prior to recode, that is. That is not true. Before and after the vote was taken on November 11th, council members raised the issue of design standards not being present in the proposed ordinance. A week later, the planning staff memo received by council is clear. Design standards cannot be added at this time. The upcoming 2026 Comprehensive Plan Review might be the time to do it. The design standards that apply to duplexes with one lot, not two lots, apply to single-family attached. Single-family attached dwellings are required to use alley access when feasible. Most of us don't have alley access. If the goal is to have design standards that make single-family attached dwellings fit and not stick out if built in a typical single-family detached neighborhood, that goal may never be achieved. However, the ordinance, including RN1 and RN2, should not be approved at the present time. How do you accommodate a dwelling and auto access on lots that are 25 or 37 and 1/2 feet wide and make it look like it belongs within a block face of typical single-family detached dwellings in an RN1 and RN2 neighborhood? In our letter to Planning Commission, we asked for drawings showing single-family attached dwellings, including auto access. We never received any. Single-family attached dwellings is a new use, different from a duplex in many ways. For these reasons, and without appropriate design standards in place, we request that single-family attached dwellings be deleted from RN1 and RN2. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak in opposition to item 10D is Leland Hume. Mr. Hume, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to address counsel.
My name is Lee Hume. I live at 6902 Haverhill Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37909. I come tonight as president of the West Hills Community Association, but also too as a member of a neighborhood that is typical of many neighborhoods across the city of West Hills has been around for almost 3/4 of a century, and it didn't happen just overnight. It's been a slow, deliberate process in many phases. There were 12 different phases of the original West Hills community. Our neighborhood is like most Knoxville neighborhoods. We're friendly, welcoming, diverse, caring, and vibrant community that has experienced change and grown steadily and deliberately for many years, and look forward to the future and its possibilities. Our neighborhood roots were planted well before the amenities and made it so attractive, just as in other neighborhoods across the city in today's market. There was no interstate highway, no West Town Mall, not even a Trader Joe's. Yet our subdivision continued to grow, and the amenities followed. Soon, there were new subdivisions starting across Knoxville. Since neighborhoods, since then, neighborhoods in all parts of Knoxville, from Holston Hills to Park Ridge, Fountain City to Fourth and Gill, Colonial Village to Island Home, have grown as people have sought their piece of the American dream. People saved, sacrificed, and carefully planned to move into a home of their dreams, to have their own castle, if you will, regardless of how modest or how grand it may be. They made new friends, shared experiences, raised children, built memories, created a community. And as one, these communities created a vibrant and inviting city of Knoxville. Since Knoxville's first zoning ordinance went into effect in law on October 15, 1928, individuals in neighborhoods across the city have relied on the laws to set limits everyone can understand and abide by. With occasional tweaks in Major Olberholt of recode just five short years ago, it has served the citizens and businesses of our community well without sacrificing quality of life. In the years since the first zoning laws went into effect, major, the majority of Knoxville residential communities have been zoned RN1 or RN2. The guidelines of those, these two zoning districts have helped foster flourishing communities and made the city more attractive for neighbors and those interested in moving to Knoxville. Today, we believe the proposal before you will create not only a new class of dwelling, but also a host of problems that have not yet been considered, such as the conflict with the existing RN1 and RN2 low-density zoning districts, additional strain on existing infrastructure, including first responders, traffic, schools, et cetera. This is not just a legal issue. It is a neighborhood issue that involves trust, confidence, and quality of life.
Mr. Hume, thank you so much. That concludes your time.
We ask that you deny. Thank you.
Okay. All right, council members, that concludes the public forum on this item. Councilmember Parker, then councilmember Ryder.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Brooks, I had a question for you that I sent by email. I'm not sure if you received that.
Yes, councilmember, I did receive that, and I did respond.
Oh, I didn't see it.
That's okay. But it was a little, it was a little later in the afternoon.
So just the clarification around subdivision in this ordinance and what is allowed for single-family attached dwellings when it, as it pertains to subdividing the lot.
Okay. So let me get out the notes here. So the subdivision is based on the dimensional standards of the particular zone that it might be in. So in the example that you sent me, there was not a zone that was identified. I didn't see one. But so, for instance, if it was RN1 for single-family attached, you'd need to have 7,500 square feet per dwelling unit. And then it, so RN2 is 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit, RN3 is 3,750, and so on. So it depends on the zoning district.
So, but it's possible with the, and tell me where the 25-foot width requirements are relevant. Is that wherever?
That might have been coming from the subdivision regulations, potentially, of where that was coming from. That's why I was a little unsure, so I had some questions to follow up to your email.
Well, essentially, I'm trying to get a sense of if you have a property and want to, you know, turn the single-family home into a duplex and subdivide the lot, but then you realize, oh, I have such a large lot, I could actually fit two duplexes on this lot, using 25-foot width each. You know, if I do large ceilings and a certain design, I can get that square footage maybe met, maybe adding it on to, maybe that's not how it works. But I'm trying to get an understanding, because when I've spoken with members of the community, it was unclear what would be possible under this ordinance, and I wasn't able to answer their questions.
So there are some minimum lot widths that are identified in the markup for the, for this particular use. So for single-family attached, it's 37 and 1/2 feet per dwelling unit. And then again, as you move from districts, it changes just ever so slightly. So for an RN2, RN3, and RN4, it's 25 feet per dwelling unit. So maybe that's where that came from. So maybe that was the, so that's, that's where that width is.
And that would say it again, RN2?
That would be RN2, 3, and 4. That would be 25 feet per dwelling unit.
Okay. Those are all of my questions for now.
Councilmember Ryder.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna do and say a couple of things, and if y'all want to talk about this for hours, I'm happy to do that. Can talk all night about this. But with a lot of robust conversation over the last couple of weeks since our last meeting, there are a lot of people impassioned on both sides of this, and I just want to be clear that this originated from a request in an RN4 zone. So I'm going to make a motion to approve, and then assuming I get a second, I have an amended motion that I would like to make.
Motion made to approve and seconded?
Apparently, that happened. Okay. So.
Would you like to make a motion to amend?
Yes, I'm gonna make an amendment, a motion to amend. At this, well, before I make the motion, let me say this. I feel, I feel, based on comments that I've received and heard from people, that RN3, 4, and 5, and above 6, where two-family dwelling, aka duplex, aka single-family attached, are ready to go forward tonight, but clearly, there's more discussion and a lot of questions and concerns about design, and layout, and driveways, and other issues. So I think at this time, RN1 and RN2 would be best deferred back to planning, which I'll make that as a separate motion if we get there, for additional consideration and review during the comprehensive planning process, because I think that's the best place for that. So my amended motion is to approve removing references to RN1 and RN2 to strike out the proposed insertions in Article 4.1, Point B, and C. Article 4.3, Table 4-2, for the columns RN1 and RN2, and Article 9.2, Table 9-1, under the columns for RN1 and RN2.
Okay, there's been a motion to amend. As she just said, it's been seconded, it removes RN1 and RN2 from this proposal. Is that an accurate summary, Councilmember Ryder?
Did you say, hold on two seconds. Didn't you say make that separate? Okay, all right. That's, that's, we got one.
Okay, the motion to amend has been made and seconded. Councilmember Singh.
Thank you. I'm not sure where this, where this goes in the process and procedure. But Councilmember Ryder, would you be open to removing RN1 but leaving in RN2 in your amendment?
I, I mean, I would be open to that. My feelings were there was not the willingness on this body. What I will say in response to your question is that one of our greatest issues, because you hear people here in the room and people who've been emailing us, their neighborhoods are very different and very diverse, and there is no intent to change anyone's neighborhood and minimize anyone's neighborhood. But 59% of our residential lands are RN1. So you're all lumped in the same zoning, no matter what you are and how you're laid out and when you were built. And that is also something that lends difficult to design standards. So if you were to say, only one garage, only two garage, you can have three, you can do this, you can do that, it looks different, different places. I live in a no-garage area, so if we're gonna start getting into the weeds to that. RN2 is roughly 20% of our residential zones, our current residential land. These are approximate numbers because they change and fluctuate. So I think those two factors right there lend to some of our largest problems, is that we're all zoned alike and we're not alike when it comes to trying to nail down what is tolerable. The other thing that I would say, and this goes to the conversation of design standards, I guess I'm going far afield from the motion on the floor, is, never mind, I'll stop talking about that for right now.
Councilmember Singh, you still have the floor. Was your question answered? You were asking.
I don't know. Are you willing to amend your amendment?
So we have an amended motion on the floor. I suppose you could amend that. We could see how that vote shakes out. If that doesn't shake out, we go back to the amended. Would that be correct, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, a member could move to strike out the references to RN2 in your motion to amend. And if that prevailed, the underlying RN2, or rather, RN2 would be preserved in the main motion to approve the ordinance from planning. It's a little confusing, I admit.
So let's see if I get this in the right order. I would like to make a motion to strike RN1 from this item.
A substitute amendment?
No, RN1.
No, you want to strike RN?
You want to preserve RN2.
Yes. Oh, I'm amending her amendment. Okay.
So you want to make it so RN2 sticks, stays in and RN1 is excluded?
Correct.
Okay. Does everyone understand Councilmember Singh's amendment to the, substitute amendment or amendment to the amendment? I don't know.
It's an amendment to the amendment.
An amendment to the amendment.
Amendment to the amendment.
Okay. Is there a second to this? Okay, Councilmember Parker has seconded it. Please proceed with your discussion. Councilmember Ryder, did you, your light's on, do you want to discuss?
Well, my light was on because I never got my five minutes. But if, so now there's a, now we're discussing, for everybody's sanity, we're discussing the amended amended motion, which is all zones except for RN1. And since Councilwoman Singh proposed that, I'm gonna defer back to her and let her discuss that, and then anybody else can weigh in.
Councilmember Singh?
To me, I would like it to remain as it is, but I know that there's a lot of opposition. I've had lots of questions. And this is something that I feel really, really strongly about, all of the emails that we have gotten saying this is gonna destroy neighborhoods. I really, it's my second to my last meeting, so I'm gonna say how I feel. Whenever I hear from certain people in neighborhoods that are well-established, they worked hard, they gathered their pennies, they, they did all the right things, and they got a home. And it feels like now they're set and just F everybody else that's gonna come afterwards. Even though we have all worked hard and put in our time and our money, just things are unaffordable at this point. So that's my angry self. And then I had an amazing conversation with someone I love dearly and respect, and she also sent me an email asking for this to not be applied to RN1. And the discussion was really different. It was her talking about, her husband died a few months back. She's a solid member of the community, been there for, I mean, I know her grandchildren now. And what she was talking about was coming from a place of fear that her life would change, her community would change. Every Christmas, she and her neighbors that she's known for so many years would go out caroling. Last night, the kids came over, just banged on her door, knocked on her door, saying, can I come pet your dog? And then the 10-year-old girl is like, can I see your kitchen? You know, this is all community stuff that she does not want to lose. And my conversation with her was, it's not threatening that. There are still communities, there will still be children running across the street and playing with dogs and cats and generations to come. There will just be a more of a variety of families that can afford it. The ones who have also worked hard, they just didn't get into the market at the right time. And now they are being sidelined. We're not gonna stop people from moving in. So why I wanted to include RN1 as well is the neighborhoods that I've heard from, that we've all heard from, the hundreds of emails that say the exact same thing, protect our neighborhood and our, the characteristic, the character of our neighborhood, which to me still, when my family moved into West Hill area in '76, that meant to keep people like me out. So that's what it triggers for me every time I hear, protect the character of my neighborhood. We managed to live in anyway. So it bewilders me that one of the neighborhoods that will be the least affected, because there's so few empty lots, and the fear of tearing down houses just in order to make a two-family dwelling, that's, that's a fear. I do not see that occurring as a common thing. It doesn't make fiscal sense. So how I see it is, West Hills is one of the neighborhoods that has spoke up the loudest, very well organized against this, and yet would be least affected. So it's kind of, why are you trying to prevent the rest of the city from being the rest of the city? I forgot where I started with this.
You can, there's some other people who, you can come back to when you're ready.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you. I'd like to stay, I have some thoughts on this overall. We don't need to rehash for two weeks in a row, but we can. But I want to speak to the amended amendment, and won't be able to support that, only because I think RN1 and RN2 are very similar. There's no difference, no difference between the two other than lot size. And so I think we need to address, one, we need to address both together. I think you're creating more problems by trying to further separate those. I appreciate the intent. I know where you're coming from, but just on the amended amendment, I won't be able to support that, because I think those two things need to be together.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I support the amendment to the amendment. And I supported this agenda item in full at our last meeting, but have had additional conversations and questions since our last meeting, and have some concerns. Removing only RN1 would address some of my concerns, because this, how. concerns, because this, how lots can be subdivided was one question that came up in an RN1. We have a variety of lot sizes that could create different scenarios. I got a little bit of clarity tonight, but still have a few more questions. And then as I revisit these issues, the same concerns come back, and I lean more towards no, and waiting for that comprehensive plan. Because as you speak with folks in the neighborhood about prior decisions we've made, you learn whether it's resulting in affordable housing or not. And I'm seeing too many examples of it not resulting in affordable housing. So, you know, we're continuing to look for ways to increase density, presumably with a long-term goal of increasing our housing stock, but not the immediate need, addressing the immediate need of affordability. And so it's difficult for me to rush plans that could have a major impact on neighborhoods if I'm not certain it's going to result in affordability. I'm also worried about making properties more attractive to investors and making it even less affordable. But these are concerns that I've had over the last several years. And, you know, I struggle with whether to take that hard line and vote against the zoning changes and request, and wait for that comprehensive plan, or look for areas to compromise so that we can see some positive developments move forward. I'm struggling with that tonight. But I also echo the sentiments shared by my colleague, that a lot of the arguments being made against increased density are simply not moving. And what I continue to hear, and honestly, what we have to acknowledge within our zoning code and our responsibilities within our zoning code, is that we are truly called upon to protect wealth and ignore poverty. Poverty is for the churches. It's for the community to address. We have very little in our budget that goes towards addressing poverty, but we put a lot of attention on protecting wealth. And a lot of the arguments that were made to me were not only about the wealth and quality of life that folks have been able to achieve in a certain neighborhood, but how they wanted to guarantee that for their children. And not necessarily a mention of wanting others in the community to have that opportunity. Not necessarily a mention of all of the access and convenience that certain neighborhoods have, and how can we create space in our neighborhoods for a more diverse population, so that they can also have access to that convenience. That tends to not be the conversation, and that's very disappointing. So it's hard to support those arguments, but at the same time, I do see developments being approved that are not resulting in the affordability. So there's a part of me that wants to hold back, let's wait for that comprehensive plan. I would love to see us adopt policies like I've seen in cities like Chattanooga, where we only approve increased density when affordability is guaranteed. If affordability is not attached to the project, we do not approve increased density. That's where I'm leaning right now, is we need to really create plans that give our neighbors a clear understanding of what they can expect as far as future developments in their neighborhood, and we need to focus on our goal of creating more affordability in our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah. So just wanted to be clear with my colleagues, that if the motion to amend carries, the one that is either currently in front of us or the one that I made before, that I will make an additional motion to refer the proposed insertions struck back to the Planning Commission for review during the comprehensive plan process, which, Ms. Brooks, for that comment, what is the timeframe for that?
We anticipate getting, I mean, it's already somewhat underway, but we anticipate getting a consultant onboard within the next 60 days to assist with that process.
Okay. So the public process for that would be in the 2026 calendar year?
That's correct.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. And I will, just to the comments, so right now, we're talking about the amended motion, the amended amended motion, which is RN2 through RN6. And I will support that. I will say that pretty much everyone that has emailed in opposition is coming from an RN1 district. If you look at the maps, it's RN1. Everything is very broadly RN1. And I'll just remind everyone that it's 59% of our residential zones are RN1. And then RN2 is 20% of our residential zones. And the RN3 and some of the RN4s are scattered in the RN2s. So they're co-mingled. Ms. Brooks, could I just, as a tangent to this conversation about this motion, would you please define for me what low-density residential includes?
Excuse me, sorry. The zones that it includes? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I know it's RN1 and RN2, correct?
That's correct.
And what does that include? Low-density residential means?
Typically means, our plans define it as typically less than six dwellings per acre.
Okay.
And it's predominantly single-family and attached-to-family.
Attached-to-family?
Under special use.
Okay. But not as a right?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go with Councilmember Fugit, then Roberto, then Thomas. So Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, if this isn't confusing enough, here we go. I will just say, I can't support not, I can't support the amended amended, because part of what I hear about this is, regardless of where it is, it's not clear yet what it will look like, what the standards will be. And I don't think we are doing, our citizens who own property now and have invested in those neighborhoods, we're not being fair to them if we put something in place that we don't even know how it's going to work. So I will not support the amended amended, but I will support the amended. And the original amended motion made by Councilwoman Ryder. And if Councilwoman Roberto will not kill me, I'd like to call the question.
Okay, the motions been made to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question, which will cease debate on this amendment before you right now?
Amended amendment.
Please. Yes. Just, all those in favor of the call for the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then we'll vote on this amendment that Councilmember Singh put forth, which, does everyone understand what it is?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion to, this motion to amend fails. We're back to the original motion in favor as amended by Councilmember Ryder, which takes out RN1 and RN2. Is there any further discussion on those, on this amendment? Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Just clarifying, what this amendment is doing is taking references to RN1 and RN2 out of the present discussion of this item. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then later, you're going to do a motion about sending a question to Planning?
Another motion, correct.
Okay, that works. I support that. And so I think RN1 and RN2 both need to be looked at in this together, because one of the challenges that I see is that we learned in the last meeting, and we've heard again tonight, that the Planning Commissioners, when this came to them, didn't have complete information. This is only allowed in peer jurisdictions where townhouses are allowed. That's not in RN1 and RN2 here. In the old code, they were limited to three-acre lots. That's not what we're talking about here either. And it was not allowed in the precursors to RN1 and RN2. Sorry. I have, my father's been dealing with some things, so he's on breakthrough, so I have to turn the phone off. But it wasn't him. Anyway, I want to make sure that the Planning Commissioners have complete information. They didn't have all the complete information. That is the complete information. And so for that reason and others, I think this does need to go back. These need to come out, RN1 and RN2 need to come out, and I'm glad to support it. And I would also support the motion to have Planning look at RN1 and 2 again in the future during a comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, I would like to underline what my colleague, Councilperson Fugit, said. What we would be asking to vote on tonight if we approved it in RN1 and RN2 is a concept that we haven't even seen. You know, we don't even know what it's going to look like. So I think it would be a disservice to people in my neighborhoods for me to vote to approve these attached dwellings when design standards haven't even been met. So I don't know what they're going to look like. And then the other thing, it's just a comment, most of the focus has been on West Hills, and they've got a real organized community group. They are vocal and effective. But this is not just coming from West Hills. Three neighborhood associations in my district, if you read your emails, have spoken out against this. Norwood Homeowners Group, Oakwood Lincoln Park, Fountain City Town Hall. So that's across the city that we have these concerns. So it's not just people in RM1, and it's just not people in West Hills.
Okay, Councilmember Helsley?
Thank you. I was just going to say, if you're going to make a motion to go back, to go to the comprehensive plan, which is going to take a year, maybe, you said, I guess I just want to express concern that we're looking at everybody, all I hear about is density all the time. There's nobody, there's nowhere to live, we don't have any density. But yet, we're going to look at 11% of the landmass of Knoxville is all that's going to be affected, with a possibility of even doing this. So I just want to throw that out there, because like, you know, 88.9% of this city is RN1 and RN2. And if we don't do something, I don't know, what do we do? Put up a close sign? I mean, I've been told, I've been asked if we could do that. I told them, no, we can't be closed. So, right?
That's right.
Maybe we do the comprehensive plan. I don't know, but it...
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah. So I think we're supposed to be talking about the amended motion, but I have got to respond to some of the things that have been said here. So, Mr. Berry, we do have design standards in the code. Is that correct? It's in Section 9.3, Section J?
That is correct.
Would you like to read them, or would you like me to read them? Because I'm just going to insert here, I agree with you, Councilwoman Helsley. Time is of the imperative when you're constantly listening to people say they don't have a place to live. So those of us who have a place to live, good for us. Let's draw the moat and draw up the bridge. But in the meantime, and I'll get back to the amendment, Mr. Berry, speak fast. Sorry. I got cut off on my five minutes a few minutes ago, so let's go. You want, I'll help you get started. These two-family things, they apply to this as well?
They do.
9.3J?
Correct. So principal use standards, 9.3J, are for two-family dwellings, which is a duplex. It says the following standards apply to new construction and conversions of existing structures. It says on lots, less than one acre in lot area, dwelling must have a primary entrance from a facade facing the street. So the front entry must be a dominant feature on the front elevation of a home and an integral part of the structure, using features such as porches, raised steps, stoops, or roof overhangs. Number two, windows, entrances, porches, other architectural features are required on all street-facing facades to avoid the appearance of blank walls. Number three, 15% minimum transparency requirement applies to all street-facing facades and is calculated on the basis of the entire area of the facade. Number four, front-loaded detached garages are limited to 60% of the width of the front building facade line, or 24 feet, whichever is greater. Garage width is measured as the width of a garage door. In the case of garages designed with multiple garage doors, the distance is measured between the edge of the outermost doors. Number five, front-loaded attached garages must be set back a minimum of five feet from the front building facade line, and the building facade line does not include architectural features such as bay windows or porches.
So, Mr. Berry, these design guidelines were applied to the list of duplexes. You sent me a list of duplex, aside from if they were in infill housing, historic zoning, or neighborhood conference surveyion districts, where there's additional standards. These are the standards that were applied to the two-family dwelling slash eight duplex slash not single-family attached, because it didn't own the dirt underneath them. When we have this conversation about what does a two-family attached looks like, you can't tell the difference between it and a duplex, because all the difference is, is there's an invisible lot line down the shared wall, so they own the dirt underneath them. So that's what it looks like. It looks the same. These standards apply to the one in West Hills. Is that correct on West Ridge?
That's correct.
Okay. So there are people who like the way it looks, and there are people who don't like the way it looks. So when we have these conversations during the comprehensive planning process, if you don't like the way that looks, then these are the standards that need to be modified. Does the garage need to set back further? Does one of the garages need to face a different direction? Does one of the doors need to face a different direction? Does it need a second story? Does it need this? Does it need that? This is what I'm going to say. There's been conversations, and people are like, I don't want two garage doors facing the same direction. Well, I drove by a single-family house today in West Hills and took a picture of it, I'm sorry, outside West Hills, it was on Mars Hill. Three garage doors facing the street. So is it okay to have three garage doors facing the street in lesser design standards if you're a single-family house? I went to Viewcrest and Peachtree. Some people don't like those brand-new houses, and they're over $800,000. They're on Debbie's Street, where she grew up there, Peachtree. And they look immensely different than the houses that are around them. Single-family houses, also sold already. Can't buy one, so sorry, gone. So do we not want things that just don't look like the things around them? And welcome to my neighborhood, if you can buy in, there's not very many houses to purchase. That's where we are in the H1, where we, and we live in the infill houses there. And we have these other additional standards. So do you want the standards for the places that don't have infill, that don't have H1, that don't have NC? I don't know that I'm comfortable saying, nobody gets to go outside the box and use the crayons outside the lines, but that's what we end up with if we say, design standards for everything. And that's why, when people come to my neighborhood and they go, wait, I didn't know there were guidelines that told me what I couldn't do here. I'm like, yeah, it's only a few streets in the whole city that have that. If you don't like that, go to the other streets. But now the conversation is, we want to tell everybody what to do everywhere, and maybe that's where we're going. Those folks over there get to vote on that eventually, not me. I'll yell at them to tell them what I think. But I'm just saying, we just have to decide as a community what our conversation is going to be. Do we want to tell everybody what to do, and we want everything to match, and everything to jive, or do we want variety?
Thank you. Councilmember Singh, and then Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you. Councilwoman Ryder, you asked something, are we going to tell everybody what to do, kind of thing. There are about 20 people up here on the podium, the stage. I'd say 18 at least already own a home. I'd like to see some of these decisions made by people who are looking for a home. I think we'd have really different conversations than about whether the garage is up front, or if there's enough fenestration at the side of the building. It's just, we are all comfortable, and we just don't seem to feel the rush.
Vice Mayor Smith?
I was just going to mention, the next five councilmembers, I don't see any notepads, but y'all better be paying attention. So a couple of things, I think, I think we've done a lot with the urgency of the housing need in our community. And I know you've been an advocate, Councilwoman Singh, so I'm not just addressing your comment in general. I want to, one first, thanks, Councilwoman Ryder, because like Mr. Harper said earlier, I want to applaud the desire for more options. This gives more people more options to buy homes and to be homeowners. So for those that want to do that, this gives a very good option. I fully support the inclusion of RN1 and RN2 in this, but I do think we have to recognize a couple of things. One is that it will increase more supply of things that are rare in neighborhoods. I'm not saying they don't belong there, we should have more of them. I live in RN2 neighborhood, these are welcome in my neighborhood, we have them across the street. So I do think, though, it is important to acknowledge the reality of the builds will... So I do think, though, it is important to acknowledge the reality of the builds will look different than what people are used to. So people are hesitant for that. That doesn't mean we shouldn't pursue it. We should pursue it, this provides more housing supply. But I do think it requires a very specific scalpel to the existing design standards with a very focused lens for this. So I think that, to recognize that, I think is important. And I also don't think, might be rare on this stage, I don't think we need to wait for the comprehensive plan, you know, I think somebody can address this in planning staff, I didn't get that approval from Director Brooks, but I think this does, you can add it to the comprehensive plan, work plan, or do it separately, I don't think it needs to be held up for a year and a half or two. And the other is, I think, the dynamic we're discussing around certain neighborhoods having overlays, I think, particularly for West Hills, and my friends that live there, I think when you cry wolf too many times, it becomes hard to believe. Now, that's not representative in this specific dialogue, but when entire neighborhoods come to us and say duplexes are not allowed in my neighborhood, and they are on paper allowed through special use, of course, there's a certain amount of education required in certain neighborhoods. So your advocacy has to be educated and narrow, so that you don't say things that, you know, trigger different people for different reasons, and you lose credibility when you don't narrow in on the specific item, and the entire neighborhood is kind of coming at us saying things that just aren't part of the code. So I would suggest, if you want to be effective in your advocacy, be very clear and educate your community before you kind of unleash the hounds, I guess is what I would add to this. So there are overlays, there's EN, there's NC overlays, there's historic neighborhood overlay, so, you know, this is a bit extreme, but if you want to be different, there's overlays for that. And I think be accurate, be informed, send informed people to advocate, and/or add an overlay to your neighborhood to keep exactly what you want. Now, there's problems with that, too, but I think if you want to be different, you need to pursue different. The city, entire city can't be held up with one small group asking for no difference, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Thomas, and then Councilmember Ryder?
Yes, I want to make some general comments, hopefully they're germane, but these discussions that we have, they continue to be narrowly focused on weakening zoning standards in neighborhoods to solve a significant housing shortage. And we talk about that like that's the only game in town, but it's not. There's lots of underused blighted property, and yes, a lot of them are along the arteries and the corridors where the infrastructure is already there, but yet we spend 80 or 90% of our time trying to solve a housing shortage by weakening zoning standards that is, it's a balance about keeping healthy neighborhoods. And we get into these really terrible fights between developers and neighborhoods, and they just go on, and we could make steps to get out of that if we would look at underused property that is not being developed. And the city is doing some of that, I want to give them the credit for what has been done, but it's not been enough. And we need to focus on that instead of trying to shoehorn more density into established neighborhoods when the, the opportunity for significantly solving the housing shortage, that's not where it is. It's under, in underused property, in blighted property. People say, well, they're not making any more real estate. Well, they're not making any more real estate, but there's a lot of real estate that out there that's not being used. So those are just some general comments. I will be supporting the motion, the amended motion, to take out RN1 and RN2, and, you know, we can look at that later. But anyway, I just wanted to make, make those comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, so I just want to say, I don't feel that we're weakening the zoning code, whether we add it to one or the other, it's something that's already there as a use on review, so I'll just say respectfully, it's adding more standards, and it's adding driveway standards and many things for something that's already in the code as a use on review. The difference is owning the dirt underneath. I don't, so, Councilwoman Thomas, I know you and I both agree, there's a ton of underutilized property that we are surrounded by in our districts, and I'd love to light a fire under those people, and when we can figure that out, I'm all there with you. I'm going to be there with you, I'm going to cheer you on, because I want those certain people to free up those properties. So I think we have to do both. Secondly, Councilwoman Singh, I will agree with some of the things that you said, but I also want to say, it's, we need to do both. It's a fair thing to protect, and maybe we define that differently, different people in the community, to protect and maintain the neighborhoods we have, but sensitively add to them. I think we can do both, and I don't think we have to pit each other against each other to get there, because we're just talking about the dirt underneath something, we're not talking about reinventing the wheel. So I just wanted to say that. I've shared this story with several people over the last couple of weeks, and the last thing I'm going to say, and then I'm going to call the question, which is Councilwoman Fugat's favorite question, is I recently, my goodness, it doesn't want me to talk, I recently went to some, I saw a house for auction, and then I went to the website, and I looked, and I saw 20-something more houses for auction, and then I went and started looking at these houses, and these were all houses with beds on the floors. These people don't have furniture, they have mattresses on the floor, some of them were three to a room, most of them, they were in the sixth district, the fourth district, the third district, the fifth district, maybe some of them in the first district. They were, they were, maybe one was in the second district, borderline third. Regardless, they were spread all over in our older neighborhoods, and it turns out there's going to be, well, when I talked to the auctioneer, there's going to be approximately, that he could tell me offhand, well over 200 houses coming up for auction. And these are all low-income occupants, and we went to one of these houses that was having an open house, and the auctioneer knocked on the door and told the lady she needed to come outside and stand on the porch, and the four-year-old child came out and ran around and was very kind to all of us. She didn't know what was going on, she was very friendly. And the woman looked very fearful and very upset, but she held it together more than I do most of the time. And it turns out I was friends with the neighbors, so I got a little bit more info out of them later on, and they said, yeah, she's really worried, she doesn't know where she's going to go. So here's what's going to happen to these houses, 23 of them got auctioned last week, the rest of one, these are landlords, this is that NOA, the naturally occurring affordable housing in our neighborhoods. It is, and I've been telling everybody I can, because I feel like we've done everything we can to add more housing to the markets, in commercial areas, on the corridors, but also sensitively in some of our neighborhoods. These are all people that are about to get eviction notices, and they're going to have 30 to 60 days to leave. These houses are going to predominantly probably get gutted and rehabbed, and they're going to go on the market for $300,000-ish and above. And they're going to price all these people out, and some of them are going to scramble, and they're going to figure it out. The one lady, because I was connected with the neighbor, I was like, hey, can you pass this info? I was asking people for contacts for her to help try and find her housing. I felt like all that we had done over these past few years was just not enough, because I'm watching all these people that are getting put out on the porch, and they have nowhere to go. And so it is not to shove them into anybody's particular neighborhood, we are just not building fast enough. So Councilwoman Helsley is correct. And, and Holston Hills, they asked me at Town Hall East, I jokingly said to them, I can't go up to the interstate and tell people to stop coming here. And so Councilwoman Delvalve said, but would you please? I'm like, it's just not going to work, I can't go standing with the sign and say, stop moving here. They're going to, they're coming, and we can't stop them. And not having enough housing is just not the answer to make people not come here. So let's go light the fire under the corridors, but at the same time, let's also do a couple of other things that are already allowed. That's it. Whether it's this, or better design standards for the duplexes that are already allowed. Call for the question.
Okay. Councilmember Ryder, I think no one has signed up, has their lights on, so unless there's an objection, we'll just do the vote on the matter before us. All those in favor, does everyone understand it's the original motion taking out RN1 and RN2? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
I'd like to make an additional motion to refer the proposed insertions that were just struck out to planning, to refer them back to Planning Commission for further consideration, period. I will not attach it to the comprehensive plan.
Okay, motion's been made, as she just described, is there a second? Has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Parker? A question on that item?
I'm sorry, no.
No? Okay, your light's on.
On the, on the original motion, not the amended motion.
Okay, this is just the...
I'm waiting.
That motion's already passed. Okay. Okay, all the, does everyone understand the motion on the floor? This is to send the RN1 and RN2 to commit planning to, for further consideration. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're back to the main motion. Okay, that was an, no, we already passed that, this was just sort of a... I don't understand, I think that already passed.
We're back to the original motion to approve, it's been amended once.
Okay, all right, sorry. Okay, we're back to the original motion, that's been amended to take out RN1 and RN2, and to take those components and send them to planning. So it's been amended twice. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the conversation tonight, and the conversation has shifted me towards voting against this. I, I support further discussion at planning regarding RN1 and RN2. I, I appreciate the discussion about the need to address our affordability crisis, but I don't feel that we are doing all that we can do, and that's the reason I'm voting no. The reason we have landlords selling properties the way that they're selling them is because of how profitable it is, how much interest there is in buying those properties. But if we restricted density to only affordable projects, there would be a lot less interest from developers. And so we haven't done all that we can do. And so just to push us to continue acknowledging the impacts of our decisions, acknowledging, and not that we're saying that we are extremely unique, this crisis is a national crisis, but as I've said in previous meetings, we continue to see Knoxville stand out from what other cities are experiencing. And so we should look to other cities and see what have they incorporated that we haven't. And what we haven't done is tie density to affordability. Without doing that, we are making all properties within the city of Knoxville extremely, extremely attractive to developers, almost irresistible. So I know this will pass tonight, but I'm voting no to encourage us to recognize that we haven't done at all, and that there is more that we can do. And if we focus in on affordability rather than simply supply and demand, I believe that we'll get closer to our goal, and we'll see fewer people getting pushed out at such a high rate.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Does everyone understand what they're voting on? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, 711, or, no, seven, yeah, 711. All right, there's been a request for a brief recess, so let's reconvene at 7:40. Okay, everybody, at 7:40, we're a minute past what we said was our deadline to reconvene, so I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Councilmembers, if you can hear me, please come take your seats, because we're getting back to the meeting, and we need a quorum. I'm talking to you, Councilmember Roberto, Councilmember Mackenzie Singh, Parker, Thomas, Helsley, yeah. Okay, we got, we got a quorum here, thank you. Okay, go ahead and please start the next agenda item.
10E is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at Zero Keck Road from AEG District to RN1 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, Knoxville Real Estate Management LLC, Third District.
Councilmembers, there's several people signed up to speak. First, speaking in favor is Benjamin Mullins. Mr. Mullins, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to address counsel.
Thank you, Ben Mullins, 550 West Main Street, here for the applicant. Just a reminder, this application is to rezone 1.38 acres to RN1, to allow three homes on 20,000 square foot lots, with the balance of the property to remain agriculture at five acres for my client to build his own house on. There's been significant public outreach in this project, there's been multiple meetings. Miss, Councilmember Singh and my client have met with the neighbors and talked about this project many times. There's been multiple public meetings, I think this is the sixth public meeting we've had on this, there's been significant discussion about it. This is on Keck Road, it's just south of some industrial property, it is, Keck Road's not the biggest road, but this is not a significant development, this is three homes. Two are RN1, which we just learned from the last conversation, is the most prevalent residential zoning district in the city, 59%. It's not going to have an impact on property values out there, it's not going to have a significant impact on traffic there. You know, the industrial property, I did get some information about that. There was a concept plan approved in 2022, they do plan to put a traffic signal, they're working with Knox, Knox County Engineering at that point on Callahan Drive. One of the conditions is that there will be no access to Keck Road from that industrial development, so you're not going to have that industrial traffic conflicting with that residential traffic. So this is a very small request. We've been through, had many of these conversations, I'm happy to have more conversations, I know there's people here that are concerned about it. One of the biggest concerns I heard the last time is they're afraid of what could happen next. Well, whatever happens next would have to restart the process, would have to come back through the legislative process, and come back before this body again. There's nothing that we can do, other than what we're asking, without going back through that process. So they are protected through, through that, and they'll have an opportunity, if anybody tried to do something different, to come back through this body again. So I would ask that you approve this on second reading, and happy to answer any questions, and if I have any time left, I'd like to respond to the opposition if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two people signed up to speak in opposition to item 10E. First is Kaneen Allen. Ms. Allen, if you could come to the podium, you'll have up to three minutes to address counsel.
Hello, I'm Kaneen Allen, I live at 6714 Keck Road. This is actually the fourth time that I've spoken, and it's the fifth time that we've visited. There's actually only been one meeting with the developer and SEMA and the neighbors, not multiple conversations. There's been multiple conversations between myself and SEMA. So I want to say that a lot of, a lot of this is built on trust, that, you know, what the developer says he's going to do is what he's going to do. I think if he came and said, you know, I just want to get it rezoned, my plan is to maximize the property and build as many as possible, I think that this would be a completely different conversation. So we are trusting that what he says he's going to do is what he's going to do. So I think that that needs to be taken into consideration. And there was, you know, when we had our meeting with SEMA, I think we were split, because there were multiple neighbors there. I, myself, was one of the people that was for it, and it didn't matter, four houses, it's fine, not a big deal. We do have a tiny road, that's 11 feet smaller than what it should be, but whatever. However, there was a situation that had transpired in the timeframe that this has gone on for months, and I don't have enough time to talk about it, so I would like for SEMA to explain that situation, so that it's on... situation so that it's on record, since this is most likely the last time that we'll be discussing this. And maybe the last time that SEMA will get to be a part of it as well. So I would just ask that you tell those events for them to be on record. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Art Haynes. Come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes. I mean, three, three minutes, excuse me.
Good evening, my name's Art Haynes. I live at 6511 Keck Road. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Again, to clarify, we've only been here a few times. We did only have one meeting with Givante. At that meeting, one of the things Givante had said is that his intention was to develop all six acres. He didn't want to take care of five. That's when we discussed EN. So established neighborhood is more correct for the zoning for that area. It's already contingent to an established neighborhood. Granted, that neighborhood's not in the city, it is in the county, but it's not residential. It's established neighborhood. The other side is agricultural, across the street is industrial. Why are we spot zoning one acre in all those acres when there's actually an existing EN that would do that for all six acres, which is what he said his original intent was? He didn't want to take care of five acres. That was his comment. The other issue is, at the end of the day, when we rezone one acre to RN, it makes it a lot easier to rezone those other five acres to RN. I'm all for expansion. We need to grow. That's how our city's going to grow. That's how our budgets grow. That's how investors want to come to our city and invest money in it by growth. However, inappropriate growth causes problems. I was on a Planning Commission. I'm disappointed in our Planning Commission. I sat through the last thing. I sat through the last ones that we've been through. Everything I hear from Planning is, "We don't know. We haven't done it. We haven't done a study on that." If the Planning Commission is rubber stamping things to send to you guys, we have a problem. We have a huge problem. And it starts at Planning. Planning's job is to bring to the city a good plan, a plan that benefits the city, that benefits the neighborhood, that benefits the people. And if they're just rubber stamping things just to grow a neighborhood, we need to look further and figure out why we're doing that. Before it goes to council, the answer should be done. How come we're having to send things back to Planning constantly? Oh, we didn't think of that. Oh, we didn't do that. We don't know that. We didn't do the study. It was sent back to them because it needed a line of site study. I haven't seen a line of site study. I wrote a quest that there be exposed that line of site study that it was sent back for. If that line of site study hasn't been done, we're wasting our time because the engineer said it needs a line of site study because the staff said, "Don't do this, it's a safety issue." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counsel, that concludes people who signed up to speak to this. Councilmember Singh.
Thank you. Kanan, are you still here? Come on up, please. Hey. My dear, what are you talking about? The issue that went on?
Yeah, so the, if I have five minutes. So the issue that I was referring to was when there was a mutual friend or somebody that was supposed to speak on the developer's behalf here at council, and that person said, "I need X amount of $2,000." And then that person came to you and said, "He's not, he actually plans on doing something different than what he is telling the neighbors and you that he's planning on doing." So that's when my trust was lost on the plan.
Thank you for reminding me. Because to me, that's not a part of this any longer. That person was being very dishonest and saying wrong things. And since then, with what Mr. Mullins has been doing, he cannot build more than three on it. So anything that the other person who was trying to make $2,000 on this vote, it was crazy.
Why can he not build more than three?
Mr. Mullins, could you explain every detail of that? Thank you.
Yeah, they are in one zone. It has 10,000 square foot lot limits, but that's only if it has access to sewer. This property does not have access to sewer, and so the zoning ordinance requires a minimum of 20,000 square foot lots on septic. Sewer, in theory, could be extended to this property, but we'd have to get easements across neighbors' property and maybe the neighbors that have been opposed to this. So that's very highly unlikely that could occur.
Right.
So with the 1.38, the max that he could build on this and the 20,000 square foot lots would be three homes.
Thank you. And that was really important for me to hear because that's the conversation we had with the neighborhood. And I knew that it was a feeling of, well, what if he's not telling us the truth? What if he, if we say okay and we agree to this, and then we have something that the road can't handle at all? So I know we did a lot of work in figuring out that he cannot do more than that, even if he decided to. And if he wanted to, like you were saying earlier, we keep worrying about what will come next, what will come next. Well, we have to start the whole process over. And what comes next will be based on what is already there. I don't think the road can handle much more than that or any more than that. So, thank you. So I'm going to make the motion to approve this.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, and I'll be very brief because it's pretty much kind of a underlying of what I said before. I'm going to vote no on it, and it's simply more to do. I'm not concerned about density here. I think the applicant is competent, I have no questions about that. It's purely of the staff's report on the danger of the road, that this road is not safe even as is. So I just don't feel comfortable substituting my judgment on safety issues, traffic safety issues with the staff. So I'm going to, I'm going to vote no on this one, so.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-2. Okay. Next item, please.
10H is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code to Penix B. zoning code, Article 4.3, Table 4-2 pertaining to building height and setbacks in the RN5 District, city of Knoxville, applicants all districts. Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded, Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, I've put one sheet on your desk, in front of you, excuse me, that highlights an amendment I would like to make. Mr. Johnson, if you could pull up the slides that I shared with you. It's very simple. This change limited the height, or excuse me, the side setbacks to 12 feet originally, and I would like to change them to 10. That four feet is different in the fort. I mentioned this at the last meeting. So real fast, there's a lot to look at, but just look at the orange, that's RN5. Will, if you go to the next one, please. There's another orange, RN5. One more, please. Couple more orange. Okay, so those are not like this, I guess is my point. So this is Fort Sanders where almost the entire neighborhood is either RN5 or it's industrial for the hospital or UT. And so these changes, and most of these lots are between 50 and 70 feet wide. And so the RN5 changes in this make sense at the RN5 as it's scattered around the city, but when you're talking about a condensed neighborhood that's all RN5, it has some effects that aren't good. And one of those is, one of the great things about the fort is we've been able to preserve as many of those kind of traditional homes with a lot of students in it. And so giving these two feet back on either side for those smaller lots, so a total of four feet, will allow for the preservation and redevelopment of those iconic homes and allow more units to be in there. So just by that two feet on either side on these setbacks in the fort and small lots allows for an average two more units and preserves those historic homes. So way down in the weeds for Fort Sanders, in consultation with Director Ball and Ms. Brooks, they don't feel like that this is a meaningful change for the entire city, but it is for Fort Sanders. So just this two feet change is what I'm asking for in amendment, to change the side setback, interior side setback from 12 feet to 10 feet. So, long-winded, but-
Vice Mayor Smith, you're moving to amend it as you just described. Is there a second to the motion to amend? Okay. The motion, the amendment is on the floor. Councilmember Thomas, you have a question on the amendment?
No, not on the amendment.
Okay. Any further question or discussion on the amendment?
Okay, we're amending the, oh, yes.
The motion is to pass, but he's made an amendment from something, two feet change.
Yes.
12 feet to 10 feet?
I do have a comment on the amendment, yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yeah, we've lost a lot in Fort Sanders of that historic housing stock. And if people over, I'm sorry, been a long night already. If people take a look at the housing on 11th Street, for example, that neighborhood used to be full of those. I mean, hundreds of them. We had housing stock that rivaled parks in New Orleans or San Francisco. Look at those old Victorian houses. And we've lost a lot of them, but anything that we can do to kind of preserve that and then bring that back, I'm totally in favor for. And an interesting thing, I don't know if the statistics still hold, but I know at one time, not that long ago, Fort Sanders was the most densely populated place in the state. Yeah. And so it's, I lived in Fort Sanders, and it was one of those neighborhoods where density wasn't a bad thing, you know? And so anyway, if there's no concerns about how this would affect other parts of the city, I'm not hearing them. I don't know, I haven't really studied about what concerns there might be in other parts of the city, but I would, I would be supportive of this amendment.
Okay. Yes, Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, I just want to assure Councilman Thomas, most of the lots in Fort Sanders are between 50 and 70 feet wide. Most of the RN5 lots elsewhere in the city are over 100. So these little four-foot setbacks don't matter when you're dealing with huge lots for RN5, but when you're dealing with little fort lots, those four, those four feet matter. And specifically matter when you're trying to preserve the old homes and add on width to an existing home to allow more people with the same nice old homes that we have. It's specifically focused on preserving those. Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Parker?
Question possibly for Director Brooks, but is this the smallest interior setback that we have in the city, or do we have even less of a setback in some residential areas?
Director Brooks?
Looks like five feet would be the smallest setback, interior side setback we would have.
I was curious. With the explanation that was shared by Vice Mayor Smith, what made you land on the 10 feet rather than a smaller setback?
Well, allow me to answer and give some kudos to Mr. Berry. Mr. Berry, I can answer this, but you should, you spent an hour with me explaining this, but also a developer in the neighborhood who specializes in preserving those traditional homes showed me that most of the, so this only applies to lots that are over, over 60 feet. And so there's a lot of lots in the fort that are between 60 and 75 feet. And so that two feet on either side, within those measurements, is what's needed to typically get an extra bedroom in the width of the home.
That's correct, and the 10 feet was what was consistent with what is currently in the code for multifamily and non-residential. And so I think to Tommy's, you know, amendment to it, it's taking it back to what is in the code.
Keeping the way it is now, just this side set. I didn't get a ruler out and do some fancy work.
Where might we see those smaller setbacks? Where does it make sense for that?
Those are located typically in other districts like RN6 and 7, and then even in the middle housing, some of the interior setbacks.
Some more for the multifamily developments.
Correct.
Not single family. Okay, that helps, thanks.
Which is what the fort turns into, is multifamily essentially, because it's got six to nine students living in it.
Sure.
Okay, any further questions or discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Amendment carries. Now back to the original motion as amended. Are there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item, please.
12U is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Metro Drug Coalition Incorporated to establish a youth prevention specialist to help deter underage drinking in Knoxville schools in an amount not to exceed $75,000 per year and paid from fines accumulated as authorized by Chapter 4, Division 3, Section 4-94 of the Knoxville City Code.
Motion made to approve and seconded, council members. There's one person signed up to speak in favor of this. Or do you want to just be available if there are any questions? Webster Bailey and other members of the Metro Drug Coalition are here. Any, Councilmember Ryder?
Well, I just was going to say, this has been a little bit of time getting forward with this. These are the fines from citations for beer enforcement. Usually we use them to have hearings and pay attorney's fees and a few other things, and we have built up an excess. And so there's been a conversation amongst us of programs, of actually going back to Councilman Wallace, so in a previous council, of spending that money to support programs to help mitigate underage use, which is basically how the funds are earned, is trying to curb that as well. So this basically is a proposal for one year of funding for them to hire additional staff to do work within the schools. And it's the first time we've done it. So we thought we were going to vote on it at Beer Board, and then we thought we were going to vote it here, and then back and forth. Anyway, here we are, landed in the right place. But I have learned how to do this as I walk out the door. You're welcome.
Okay. Councilmember Singh and then Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I'm on the board of Metro Drug Coalition, but I get no compensation, so I am planning on voting on this very good idea.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker, then, if you get.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd love to hear more from the director about future plans for this position, because I imagine this, if you don't mind coming up, I imagine this is funding to establish the position, but we don't have 75,000 in excess funds coming into the Beer Board annually. So I'd love to hear long-term plans.
Thank you, Councilwoman Parker. My name's Webster Bailey, Executive Director, Metro Drug Coalition, 530 West Fifth Avenue. That is a great point to make. So the plans are, we are actively and aggressively pursuing additional funds through opioid abatement dollars at the state level, local levels, et cetera. One of the things that unfortunately, but fortunately, that the opioid epidemic has done is really opened the eyes of a lot of people across our state to the need of prevention. And so we're seeing more and more prevention dollars become available because people have figured out that if you do more on the front end, you can potentially save more on the back end. Some data shows as much as $18 in savings. So for a dollar spent on prevention, you potentially save 18 in law enforcement, social services, et cetera. So we are actively pursuing those. We actually have applications out. We're waiting to hear back. And this was an opportunity to get a jump on what we're trying to do, to kind of get the ball rolling so that we're moving at full speed once the funding that we anticipate is in place.
Wonderful. Well, I love this innovative approach. I love putting these fines and fees towards prevention, so absolutely in support of it. Thank you for the work that you all do.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I was just going to follow up to Councilmember Parker's questions. As you guys move forward, if you guys, the future council and Beer Board and Beer Chair, if that's what you guys choose to do is to fund additional of this or some other program, that is the choice. I didn't think that I should put it in place to lock you guys in. And I think if you evaluate what the results are, and that's a decision that you guys make, if the funds do allow. But I don't believe that there would be enough funds to do it year after year after year. But yeah. Um, but yeah, uh, hopefully you guys will consider that and look at what's the best way to use the funds in the future.
Council, I just wanted to mention that I had the chance to meet with the Youth Committee of Metro Drug Coalition last night, and it was, uh, really great to know that there are young people in our high schools right now who are, um, you know, being listened to and—and, you know, they know what they're going through in their peer—peer-to-peer ideas and some of their other suggestions. Um, and also they're learning as well. So I—I'm really glad that that committee's been reconvened. I know there was a multi-year pause after COVID, uh, so it was great to hear from young people who are thinking through these issues and trying to deal with it. So, uh, this—obviously this resolution would, um, enhance those kinds of activities, so. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
12V is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the proposal from Blu-ray for stock loss insurance for the city's self-insured medical plan and prescription drug plan for an estimated annual premium of $840,762.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12W is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with YMCA of East Tennessee Incorporated to provide gym memberships for full-time city employees and their families at a projected annual cost of $253,800.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, I just wanna, um, thank you for considering this. We wanna be a model employer. There's—we wanna attract and retain, uh, the best people and give them a pathway to success as they have a career here with the city. This council's done an amazing amount of work to, uh, contribute to our city being a model employer. Uh, we did the compensation study. We enacted historic raises across the city, um, to make sure we pay our people fairly. We enacted, more recently, eight weeks of paid parental leave. We've maintained, um, you know, that any insurance premium increases have been absorbed by the city instead of by our employees for 12—I think 12 consecutive years. Um, and this is another way to improve retention and also to make sure our employees, um, have access to, uh, gyms and a healthier lifestyle. So I just wanna thank you for your support for all these things, and, um, thank you for your hopeful support of this YMCA membership benefit for our community as well. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Singh and then Thomas.
I just need to say that I'm on the board. I don't get compensated. But I think the YMCA is great. It's great for exercise, it's great for community. Um, I go to the one that I learned how to swim at when I was 10 years old, and you did too, right? The same Y. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, just briefly, like, uh, this is an outlay, of course, of costs, but some of that will be recouped in just a healthier workforce, more productive workforce. So, uh, we actually, um, doing a cost-benefit ratio, we'll get some of that in cost savings, so.
Yeah, happier.
Uh, on top of everything else that people said, I just wanted to kind of add that too. But yeah, this is a great thing. I fully support it.
Great, thank you so much. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12—12X is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Quality Counts LLC to provide on-call traffic data collection services at various locations throughout the city on an as-needed basis for an annual amount not to exceed $50,000.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12Y is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with MAR Traffic Incorporated to provide on-call traffic data collection services at various locations throughout the city on an as-needed basis for an annual amount not to exceed $50,000.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12Z is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with CDM Smith Incorporated for the Washington Pike Roadway Improvements Project, increasing the contract amount by $129,700 for a new total contract amount not to exceed $2,078,300.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, Mr. Claybo, just wanna check in, see what the timeframes were here.
So we are currently in the right-of-way phase. Uh, we expect to finish up in calendar year 2026, so construction early 2027.
Okay, and we doing any of this with D-DOT funds?
It's—it's all with T-DOT funds.
It's all T-DOT funds? I will just point this out and put this out there for the record. Like, when, um, we did the ribbon cutting or the groundbreaking the other day in Adair, I think it would be a benefit—this is not directed at you, this is the whole kit and caboodle— when we're communicating with the public, if we could be like, "These are T-DOT dollars," because, um, we're always gonna see some interesting comments on social media, but I don't think people realize where the dollars are coming from. People were saying things about where the funds were coming from, and it's like, uh, it's a—it's a land right-of-way for that. So there's just this assumption that this is coming out of this, and many other things are coming out of local tax dollars. Um, and I—it would be nice to educate people when it's T-DOT dollars, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryder. Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you. You may—that may be what is addressing my question, because we do see a lot increased contract. We're seeing a lot of those. We know time is money, and the longer it takes things to get done, the more things cost. But to that end, I assume the—is the increase city money or T-DOT money?
It's—so it's an 80/20 split, so 20% local, 80% T-DOT.
Okay, so 20% of the total project cost comes out of city dollars?
That's correct.
And the 129,700 that we are paying is our additional cost for the increase, or is that—
That's total, so 20% of that.
Got it. That—to your point, sometimes that's not quite clear about how much is what. Okay, thank you.
I think another, you know, point of information that's important, both with the Greenway Project and with this Washington Pike improvements, these have been decades. It's, um, even as fast as we wanna go, it's not fast. Uh, we—I'd love to see that move faster, but I know, uh, Councilmember Ryder, this—this project started before you took office, and it's not done eight years later. But we're making progress. You—we're gonna require the right-of-ways in '26 and do construction in '27. Is that what you said?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, it's right out here in the public. We said that. Let's make it happen. Councilmember Ryder? I mean, Fugit, sorry.
I—I was just gonna say, I think that's the point of all this, that these kind of projects take a very long time. They're very clear in the beginning when they originally get going, and as time goes on, people forget kind of how we got here. Some of us weren't even on council talking about this, and here we are, six years, and still at it. So it's a great thing, we need it, um, but I do think people have fiduciary questions about what's coming out of what pot, so thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AA is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Rogers Group Incorporated for the 2025 Resurfacing Phase 2 Project, increasing the contract amount by $163,111.76 for a new total contract amount not to exceed $5,157,111.76.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, Mr. Claybo. Um, okay, so, real quick to understand, so this is an additional $163,000 from the contract that we did with Rogers Group for Resurfacing. This is that paving that everybody's out there on social media and saying that we need to do, 'cause we are. Number one, these dollars, this $5 million, comes out of local funds?
That's correct.
Okay, these are the local funds. We're not paving the state roads, so we're not paving Taswell, we're not paving Broadway, Kingston Pike, Chapman, Clinton.
Correct.
Okay, that's question part—first part. So the second part is, is the $163,000 additional because it costs that much more? Is it—or is it still in budget?
It's, um, so in this particular change order, uh, we ended up doing some work on Cecil Avenue that you're probably aware of.
I'm familiar.
It's in cooperation with KUB. So KUB is reimbursing the city for that work. Uh, so KUB is—is paying for that. Uh, we also added 28 speed humps for traffic calming to the contract.
Okay.
And that's cycling through some of those neighborhoods who were—we're in that program, so.
Okay, so it is, this costs $163,000 extra dollars.
Yes.
But it's not necessarily outside of what was budgeted.
No.
This is not a budget amendment.
No.
It's just using extra dollars out of the engineering pot of funds.
That's right.
Out of people's local tax dollars.
And KUB's paying for some of that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AAB is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Adams Contracting LLC for the North Cherry Street Stormwater Improvements Project, increasing the amount by $751,020 for a new total contract amount not to exceed $2,794,231, funded with the American Rescue Plan Act grant.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AC is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Design and Construction Services Incorporated for the Knoxville Urban Wilderness Gateway Park James White Pavilion Project, increasing the contract amount by $162,560.32 for a new total contract amount not to exceed $4,759,201.54 and extending the date of completion to January 31, 2026.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AAD is a resolution authorizing fees related to services provided by the Engineering Department.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Ryder?
Mr. Claybo, you're gonna miss me. What exactly is this? This is the most undescriptive thing for the public. What are these fees?
I've—I've got Deputy Director Chris Halli here, he's gonna speak to that, but it's—it's basically related to—to permit fees, uh, specifically to plat reviews.
Oh, this is—this is authorizing you guys to charge other people fees?
Yes.
Mr. Halli, do you want to elaborate?
Sure, th—this is twofold. One of them is, it—and the ordinance that we just passed for—for the stormwater and street ordinance, it, uh, removed all of the fees from that and put it into a resolution format. That resolution format is the same format that the Plans Review and Building Inspections already uses in order to charge their fees. So largely what this has done as a whole is made it more similar to all the other fees that are charged in the development process. The one section of the fee structure that we have, so there are several of them that are about permits proper, but there's a section about plats, survey plats, and this does change the fee structure on the plats, uh, in that area. It slightly raises the fee structure, but it also consolidates it into a front—we—we're transitioning from a tiered system to just a singular amount that is an amount plus, uh, per lot basis to be able to come up with a new fee. It's much easier to reconcile what the fee expectation is when going through that process. There is one aspect of the fees that is related to, I'll say, excessive review, something that has gone through several cycles. The way it was previously managed was, um, if you hit beyond a third cycle of, uh— when you hit your third cycle of—of, uh, a mathematical computation regarding the survey plats, you had to pay a $100 fee. We've transitioned that into, on the fourth review, having it a full fee, but it be-being for any, uh, issues related to those plats. And what that's intended to do is 75% of the plats that are submitted are completed, approved, and ready for signatures after three submittals. And so it's for the 25% that go many more, uh, cycles than that, that create an inefficiency in our process, some as many as 10 cycles. And so there is a level of punitive nature, uh, for that other fee transition.
Okay, so when I had my surveyor redo, uh, create a plat and redo my plats recently, and my stuff had to go, and you guys had to sign, and then he got comments back two times from engineering, he would have different fees. If he'd have not got the corrections correct and had to come back a fourth time, like, that's what these fees are for. Okay.
On the fourth time, that's when that, uh, additional fee would—would—would come into play.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none? Oh, Councilmember Parker, sorry.
This addresses, I'm imagining, an issue that the Engineering Department is experiencing. How many reviews are people coming back for?
It really just depends on the specific group that is submitting it, and sometimes the complexity of the property that is being surveyed. Uh, as I mentioned, about 75% of them are managed within three reviews, which is a reasonable, uh, period of time. It's the other group that has more than that, and to tell you how many agencies struggle at being able to get it done within the—the—I'll say the more routine period of time, it kind of depends. And some of that depends on, if you have a surveying organization that is out of town, for instance, somebody who's—who's doing work in Knoxville but, uh, lives in Kentucky, they may not do a lot of work in our community, and sometimes they're not familiar with our rules and regulations, and so they may struggle with it more. I think there are some folks that take on more work than they can handle, and sometimes that is a factor in the quality of work that we see.
Gotcha. Um, I am, uh—I'm usually hesitant to re—adopt more punitive measures unless, um, you know, there is a clear, um, issue that—that could be resolved with those punitive measures. So that was one thing that just caught my attention. Usually, cities tend to promote their customer service aspect to a lot of these services and—and want to improve understanding in the hopes of improving efficiency. So I wanted to get a better understanding if there were some bad actors involved, or—
There are some bad actors, and I would say the customer service is to the 75% of the folks that do submit and manage quick, on-time, uh, submittals. It gives our staff more time to be able to turn those around quickly, whereas we spend a significantly additional amount of time dealing with the folks that, uh, that don't put forth the work. So we'll invest a lot more of city resources in order to get through the full process of some than we do the other. So it could be considered punitive, but it also could be somebody paying for the time that they are using, uh, staff in order to get theirs all the way through the process.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. What are the fees that we're talking about? What are we—what are we talking about? What is being added on? So... The way it was set up before is, we had multiple different categories of plats. So we had, uh, administrative plats, we had, uh, plats that were 1 to 51 lots, plats that were greater than 51 lots. So there were three different categories, and so there were three different fee structures related to each of those. And we are switching it down to one. The fees are a little bit higher than they were before, and we've made them consistent. We looked around and—and looked at how, uh, a—a few different communities, Murfreesboro, Chattanooga, uh, Blount, Mariville, Alcoa area, and we kind of hit in the middle, which is pretty close to what Chattanooga does. Murfreesboro's a lot higher, um, Blount-Mariville area's a lot lower. And so we tried to hit in the middle and come up with a fee that is reasonably, uh, associated with communities of a similar size.
Okay, so I get that you're simplifying the fee structure. I support doing that. You don't have three, you've got one, so it's simple. You know, if you get to this point, you're gonna have to do—but how much is the fee?
So the fee previously for an administrative plat was $80, and it will transition for—let—let me say it this way. All the previous fees, for the administrative one, it was $80. For 1 to 51, it was $100 plus $10 per lot. For 51 or over subdivisions, it was $300 plus $6 per lot. Moving forward, it'll be $200 plus $10 per lot for all of those.
Okay.
There's an additional criteria that—I—that's a little different, and it's an exempt plat, which is kind of an unusual type of plat in the city, and that previously was $70, and it will move up to $100.
Okay. So what this is aiming at, just so I make sure I understand, is that the vast majority, I think you said over 75% of the applications that you get, you can handle before you would even hit these new fee structures. Is that right?
No.
Okay.
The—these—these—the first part of these— No. The first part of these fee structures are just what the process will transition from and to, so that's for any plat that comes in. And these figures that I've gone over, they haven't been updated in 22 years.
Right.
So we're talking about a long time where nothing has transitioned in it as far as increasing costs, where as the number of staff that are assigned to this, these dollars do not recoup the amount of staff time that's put into it, even with these increases. So the city is subsidizing with staff time this whole process, and this just does a little bit more to recoup some of those dollars, but also incentivize the good actors.
Okay. So, everyone has the fee. So at what point do you start to get more of a fee coming to you because you've gone through all these different reviews?
On the fourth submittal, you would have to pay that review fee again.
Okay, okay. So you go through four, and I guess what I'm just making positively sure of in doing this is that we're not adding costs to doing development. What's actually happening is that you're simplifying the process, and you're saying, we have some folks that turn things in late, or don't make any revisions when they're requested, and you're having problems with them, so you need them to pay for the services because they're taking up time, as opposed to actually trying to move a project forward. Is that a good summary?
That's probably two-thirds of what we're doing. One-third is increasing the fees slightly above what they previously and historically have been, just based on 22 years of inflation of creating that need for an increase.
Okay. All right, I think I understand it. Thank you.
Councilmember, okay. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AE is a resolution to waive City of Knoxville taxes on Knox County surplus properties pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated section 67-5-2507.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, Mr. Swanson, are you answering these questions?
Mr. Evans.
Mr. Evans.
I think...
These parcels, so some of them didn't get auctioned off before, Knox County's gonna try and auction them again? Is that what will happen?
These were offered up for sale in a Knox County, basically a delinquent tax sale.
Yeah.
And which case, for these properties, both county and city taxes were owed. In those cases, the county makes the opening bid, nobody bid on them, so the county now owns the property, and they're just trying to get rid of them by selling them as surplus property, where they don't have to make...
Because they didn't sell at auction.
That is correct. Their opening bid does not have to be the amount of the delinquent taxes.
Okay.
It can be substantively lower than that.
Okay.
But any amount that they receive gets split on a percentage basis between the city and the county based on the taxes owed. So it's a good way to get them back on the rolls and at least get us and them some of our taxes back.
And do we look at any of them as the city to see if we have any use for any of them?
I have not looked at these to see if we have use for them.
I didn't know if for housing or something. That's why I asked.
No, that would...
I mean, I know we don't build housing.
No, if...
Okay.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AF is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Holtz Builders Incorporated for the existing pool deck replacement project at the Enskip Pool and Park for a total amount not to exceed 448,021 dollars.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AG is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Knoxville Chamber to provide subrecipient funding in an amount not to exceed 100,000 dollars from the State of Tennessee grant for broadband-ready communities to support the expansion of the Chamber's E-Nox Digital Literacy Program locally.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AI is a resolution approving the issuance of a certificate of compliance to Old Severe Liquors LLC, doing business as Old Severe Liquors, relative to its application to the Tennessee Alcoholic Beverage Commission for a license to operate a liquor store in the city.
There's one person signed up to speak on this item in opposition, Patricia Barrier. Ms. Barrier, are you present? Patricia Barrier. Okay, thanks. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
Thank you, Tommy, for bringing this up. My name's Patricia Barrier. I live at 807 Phillips Avenue. And I know this is gonna go through, because this stuff always does. But I really had to speak up on the fact that, living close to Severe Avenue, that we are saturated with beer and music venues from Island Home Avenue all the way down to Severe Avenue. We do not need a liquor store here on Severe Avenue. There is another venue going in also, that is right across from the South Knox Elementary School, that my understanding is there's a newly-elected fourth district councilperson that's gonna be operating as a beer and music venue, which is just gonna increase more noise and drinking. The liquor store location is an empty lot. That used to be, that is used for overflow parking so that people can go to beer joints. There is no enforcement even on Phillips Avenue pertaining to the parking by permit that we have. People go and park there anyways because they're only gonna be there a couple hours, and of course, by the time you call the police, it's not worth it. Normally, what we have to do as residents, we have to put cones in front of our houses so that people won't park there if we leave. This location will be near the roundabout that is being constructed. It is hazardous, it will be hazardous, and will be a traffic issue with people trying to cross Severe. There's already issues with people just walking across to go to different beer joints and stuff. This is also getting to be a very dangerous area to drive, walk, and bike, or use scooters, because people just fly down the roads even on their scooters. We are getting more homeless. We also have a new panhandler that stands outside the school at Davenport and Severe. The liquor store would work. There is another approved area that's gonna be around the bend on Severe Avenue, and a liquor store could go there. That's towards the fire station town. I'm just asking to vote no on this location for a liquor store. There are many open liquor stores in South Knox, so we don't need one on Severe. And I understand that you would have to amend an ordinance so that, kind of like the pay, paying cash places, that's something that really needs to be looked into, to try and alleviate beer joints just running po areas of roads.
Ms. Barrier, that concludes your time. Thank you so much.
Anyways, thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Barrier, for your concerns generally for the Old Severe neighborhood. Mr. Frost, we typically approve these on consent every, almost every council meeting. Can you remind council, we just haven't had somebody speak to it, so that's the only reason we pulled it off of, can you remind council what this is and what our authority is or isn't?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Very briefly, liquor is generally governed, well, is governed by the State of Tennessee. The state lays out the procedure that an applicant must go through, whether it's background checks, surveying concerning distance, and other things. Then it becomes part of the duties of the law department to look at the paperwork and determine if the paperwork is in order. This is basically an administrative function. The law department has determined that the paperwork is in order. I believe that if, for some reason, council turns this down, I believe the state law provides that it will be passed anyway. I mean, I can make an argument that there's really no reason for these to ever appear on the city council agenda again, because they'll get passed by function of state law. But they're here, it's an administrative issue, and I'm sure the law department looked at everything, found that it was in order, and then placed it on the council agenda.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the discussion. Ms. Barrier, who just spoke, reached out to me about this issue, and just as Attorney Frost has described, I recognize that our role was limited in what we were voting for. We were just voting to see if they met their certificate of compliance, which, according to what's before us, they have. But what I did mention was the possibility of council considering a zoning amendment similar to an initiative that was brought, I believe, by council member, former council member Pavlis, I think maybe 20 years ago now. But when there were a lot of payday loan centers clustering in different locations around the city, an amendment to the zoning ordinance was adopted that would only allow one type of establishment within, you know, a quarter mile of each other. Now, I think, you know, payday loans are an issue that probably more in the community can, you know, kind of rally against or have strong opinions about. But we probably would have a lot more mixed views when it comes to establishments serving alcohol. But I can imagine in areas that especially like the South Waterfront, where the residential is, there's not much of a buffer from the commercial activities and the, that is a policy that could be considered, especially in those types of neighborhoods, to keep too much of a party atmosphere from developing where a residential community exists.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
We need a motion.
Oh, there needs to be a motion. Is there a motion? Motion made to approve and second it. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12AK is, excuse me.
13.
Yes, 13AK is the ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025, 2026 operating in capital budgets.
Motion made to approve and second it. Councilmembers, we have some people signed up to speak in favor of this item. First is Catherine Ellis. Ms. Ellis, if you could state your name and address for the record, you have up to three minutes to address council.
Yes. I am Dr. Catherine Ellis, and I am here as the executive director of Family Promise of Knoxville, which is at 3545 Middlebrook Pike. Access to transportation for us, for many of us, is not just about getting from point A to point B. It is a lifeline. And for too many of our neighbors here in Knoxville, that lifeline is missing. And microtransit could be something that will assist many of our neighbors with having an ability to get to and from locations and do a lot of the things that you and I think are just commonplace. We've all seen how rents have skyrocketed more than 60% in recent years, and this instability forces our low and moderate income families into an impossible bind. When money gets tight, they face a harrowing choice, pay their rent or make a car payment. For most of us in this room, this decision is easy. We'd pay our rent or our mortgage, securing the knowledge that we have a safety net. I don't know all of you personally, I know some of you, but it's a safe assumption that you're not a single paycheck away from being homeless. For hundreds of families right here in Knoxville, the safety net of savings, family, and friends simply does not exist. Surprisingly, the choice to make a car payment instead of paying rent is often the smartest choice they can make. Think about it. If they get evicted, they still have options, a friend or a family member's couch, a cheap motel for a few nights, or if all else fails, they can sleep in their car. But without their car, they cannot get to work to earn money to pay for rent. That means the eviction would be on the horizon anyway. At Family Promise of Knoxville, we have families all of the time who are facing tremendous issues with transportation. Even though they have made these choices, they are now homeless, they have their vehicle, but their vehicles are often unreliable and old and just simply not something that they can use. We've recently had a family of six with a 17-year-old minivan that had over 200,000 miles on it. We had already referred them to multiple resources for assistance with repairs. Then their serpentine belt broke. This vehicle's not going anywhere. They were not able to go to the shelter on a daily basis, they couldn't go apply for jobs, they couldn't go apply for housing. We got the vehicle towed. It was going to cost over $3,000 for those repairs in addition to what agencies were going to do for free. The vehicle was valued at $2,500, and they had a $2,000 title loan. With microtransit, this family could have taken steps to get work, to get housing, and to better their lives. Instead, they ended up having to leave Knoxville to go to a city where they hope they could find something better because they didn't have a vehicle.
Thank you. Ms. Ellis, next person signed up to speak in favor of this item is Ann O'Connor. Ms. O'Connor, state your name and address for the record, you have up to three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Ann O'Connor, and I live at 1214 Lakeland Drive, 37919. I'm here tonight as co-president of Justice Knox. I know we've lost some of our people. If you are with me, if you're Justice Knox in red, please wave. So, Mayor Cannon, we want to thank you. Thank you for bringing this budget amendment forward to support microtransit in Knoxville. We appreciate your leadership, and we look forward to working with you and your team to bring this important mode of transportation to our city. And thank you for the council members who have met with us. We urge you all to vote yes. We all agree that reliable transportation is essential. It's not a luxury, it's a lifeline. And with it, people can work, they can get medical care, they can support their families, they can stay connected to their community, and simply live their lives. Even with recent improvements to our bus system, a fixed route model in a city like ours, given our topography and infrastructure, still leaves many people out. Buses can't reach certain neighborhoods, and walking to and from stops is often dangerous. Over the last five years, Justice Knox has done extensive research. First, we listened to the stories of our neighbors, and then we met with more than 20 local agencies and businesses. Our Chamber of Commerce told us that transportation gaps are a major barrier for both employers and employees in Knoxville. Agencies also told us that one of the biggest barriers to accessing physical and mental health care is reliable transportation. After those meetings, then we looked for solutions. We met with national experts, we reviewed best practices, and microtransit just kept rising to the top. It's flexible, it's technology-based, and it's proven. We've spoken with leaders in 12 different cities, and just down the road, Chattanooga has seen microtransit improve their bus ridership and help residents around more, get around more easily. So reliable transportation is a workforce issue, it's a health issue, it's a family stability issue, and a quality of life issue. So I thank you, thank you for voting yes on this amendment tonight, so all of our neighbors can experience the freedom and dignity that reliable transportation can bring. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up is Susan Stevens. Thank you. Next person signed up is Susan Stevens. Ms. Stevens, you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
My name is Sue Stevens, and I live at 3930 Valley View Drive, 37917 in Knoxville. I'm wearing my Justice Knox hat right now, and I'm in support of the budget amendment. Stories of our families, friends, and neighbors drive our push for micro transit in Knoxville. When Justice Knox took on transportation in 2019, I told the story of my own great nephew who tried to ride the bus to his new job. He had a dangerous walk to the bus stop, and he was dropped off at a bus stop on another busy, busy road where he had to walk to finish getting to his job. And there was no way that he could schedule a bus ride that would get him to his job on time. Every year since, we've heard similar stories, including this year. Just two weeks ago, at our Justice Knox Annual Assembly, a story was shared by one of our new congregations, and I'll share that with you now. This member spoke about her mother, who doesn't have a car of her own, excuse me, and is the primary caregiver for her husband, a man who has battled serious health issues for years. The daughter works full-time and often hands over her own car keys to her mother so she can take her father to his medical appointments. This means that this family juggles their lives around transportation, deciding who stays home with their parents, or who can afford to miss work, or who can let go of their car for the day. On the days when no one's car is available, they rely on public transportation. And she also described walking long stretches along unsafe roads just to reach a stop and long waits for the bus. She worried that every delay could cost her wages or even her job. We need a transportation system built for everyone, especially those that keep our community running, like caregivers and workers, the elderly and families who are simply trying to survive. Micro transit is the critical piece in our transportation system that is missing. It will enhance the lives of our citizens and increase the effectiveness of CAT. Thank you, Mayor, for working with us to fill this gap. And thank you, council. And please vote yes on this budget amendment so that we can build out this practical, proven solution, one that would support not only families whose stories you've heard tonight, but the countless others whose stories remain untold. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, that concludes people who signed up to speak on this item. I just want to provide a brief overview. I think I've spoken, or our CFO, Boyce Evans, has spoken to you about these items. But just for a reminder, there is a part of it that's for micro transit, and appreciate the partnership with Justice Knox in working, working on this for so many years. This will have a working group that will have members of my administration. Councilwoman Helsley has agreed to be on this working group. Thank you. She's obviously council's representative on the Knoxville Transportation Authority Board. And Grant Rosenberg, our COO, is going to participate. And folks from CAT and TPO, our transportation planning organization. So we agree that we need transportation solutions in our community. This working group is going to think through some, what those solutions might look like. There are other items in this budget amendment, and just briefly, Sammy Hill Park improvements, which we're all very familiar with. We want to just keep our promises to that community. Investments in energy efficiency, accepting donations of philanthropic donations towards our Affordable Housing Fund. And then an Urban League, you know, support for Urban League's efforts and the work that they do. The biggest ticket item is one that I really think is important, especially as you guys know, we've been working on the Burlington Streetscape project for many, many years. And we've, we're shovel-ready. It's ready to go. The, the fire station has already gotten started, and we want to get the streetscape started, too. But like almost every other construction project in the world right now, the, the cost came in higher than we expected. So we are going to continue to look for efficiencies and savings in that project. But we want to go, go forward and make sure we have the funds to move forward and, and deliver for the Burlington community. So I appreciate your consideration of all the items in this budget amendment. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge that I do serve on the Knoxville Area Urban League Board. It's an unpaid position, so I do plan to vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in, in general, the budget amendments mid-year are not something that I tend to support because they are done out of context with an understanding of some of the questions that I still have unanswered from our last budgeting process. So that's, that's a concern. But I wanted to speak about the micro transit because it concerns me. Micro transit is a great idea, right? We have the CAT Lift service, and so some in our community are already using a form of on-demand bus service. But what we're also experiencing at CAT is quite a bit of turmoil among the staff. That's been going on really since I've been on council, but it's, it's gotten worse. And we've had CAT leadership come before us to talk about how CAT is struggling with recruitment and retention. We've had several different excuses given for why we're having issues with retention and recruitment. But when I talk to the drivers, what I've consistently heard over the years is a, is a form of, of a hostile work environment that they're dealing with. And a lot of our senior bus drivers have already been targeted. We saw workers going on strike essentially this year, and some of the concerns were about changes to the Lyft program. And when Justice Knox reached out to me about support of this budget amendment, I asked, have you all, as a justice organization, have you met with the union of bus drivers at CAT? And the answer was no. I'm very disappointed in that answer. Because what our residents deserve is a reliable bus service. And the vulnerable individuals that were described in a lot of the public forum comments are individuals who don't have the time, the resources, or the money to develop a plan for how they're going to rely on a micro transit service, only for that service to be unreliable because we haven't addressed a hostile work environment that can't retain drivers at the rate we need them to. We can't hire drivers to cover the routes under the new reimagined CAT plan. So we have issues that need to be addressed before a new service is adopted or a service currently in place is revised. And I'm concerned when we have unionized employees. And we're talking about a program that would rely on drivers, this is what I'm hearing, that would rely on drivers that don't have that CDL, so they're not going to drive the mainline bus, and that would allow us to pay them less. I'm hearing $16 an hour. And yet, the pay that current CAT drivers are receiving has had to be increased in order for us to improve recruitment and retention. So creating jobs that are lower-paid jobs with fewer benefits is not something I tend to jump to do. Not when we have the CAT Lift service with, with well-paid, unionized workers employing it. So the, so the workers expressed their angst, and some, and some, and some negotiations took place as they were working to sign a new contract. Some drivers were grandfathered in so they could continue driving for Lyft with their current benefits, but not all. And when I stood on that picket line with drivers, they spoke to me about the relationships they had developed with community members over their years of driving for Lyft. And some of them haven't driven for Lyft, maybe in five years, but they've been with CAT 20 years, and they still have those relationships.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. That concludes, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson had some clock difficulties, so we, we did the best we could to manage that. Thank you for your comments. I think the working group will have a lot to discuss. Any further questions or comments? Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say there's a lot of items in this that are great priorities that need funding. I wanted to highlight the micro transit. You know, it's $170,000 for a very needed program in our community. I want to thank the community members who've been advocating for this. This is something that we really need. This is $170,000, so this needs to be a start and not an end. It needs to be the beginning of this discussion as we go forward with this, because there's a lot of folks who are, as you said, they're making decisions that are impossible. And we need to make sure they have access to be able to get to work and be able to get home and get to doctor's appointments. And so I think this is a great way of beginning that process. But I hope it is, I'm glad to see this move to this direction, but I hope it is a beginning and not just an end. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker, your light's still on. I didn't know if you wanted to speak.
Sure, I'll finish my thought. So, so the negotiations happened, the contract was signed. It's a three-year contract. There'll be opportunities to revisit that contract. What many drivers hope is that there will be room to revise that plan once there's a new mayor, and quite honestly, a new director at CAT. And as many complaints as I've heard that have gone unaddressed, I'm right there with them, hoping and committed to seeing our city move towards leadership that will respect our bus drivers and that will address these serious issues that we've seen at CAT as long as I've been on council. So I'm not able to support a new program at this point because we have current programs that need to be addressed.
Any further questions or discussion? Councilmember Helsley?
I'd just like to point out that CAT employees do not work for the City of Knoxville. I think Isaac Thorne is the, the director, is the only one that's employed by the city. So there's a whole lot that went on there that's not applicable to this topic.
Seeing no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, eight, one.
13 AL is an ordinance to amend, ordinance number O-107-2019, known and cited as the City of Knoxville Zoning Code, to remove a previously approved planned district designation from property located at 962 North Gallaher View Road, Mainland MCA Knoxville applicant, Second District.
Okay, there's some people signed up to speak on this item. We'll start with those in favor. First is Adam Contop. If you could state your name and address for the record, you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
Adam Contop, 8506 Cortland Drive. I'm the engineer for the project. I just want to be here available for questions. And if possible, I'd like to allocate the rest of my time to James Lennon, who's also here to speak.
Okay, everybody gets their own three minutes. There's no time sharing, but thank you very much. If council has questions, I'll call you back up. Next person is James Lennon. If you could state your name and address for the record, you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening. James Lennon. I live at 19, or work at 1905 Ackland Avenue in Nashville, Tennessee. My company is the owner of 962 North Gallaher View Road, and I'm coming before you today to request the removal of the plan designation, the C on the map. So first, a little bit of history. The plan designation was put in place by my company back in 2016 when we first acquired the property. It was, we did that to enable us to pursue the construction of a 38,000-square-foot, 64-bed Memory Care facility. We intended to build, to develop the building on behalf of a tenant, Memory Care of America. Unfortunately, before construction commenced, Memory Care of America went bankrupt. There, then the company's founder passed away, and so eventually, we had to shelve the project. We attempted to look at other operators for the property, and spent a few years working on that. But eventually, we just realized that was not going to work out. So we, about a couple of years ago, we put the property on the market for sale. You may remember that Homestead, a local homebuilder, put the property under contract for about a year, and, and then eventually, they, they walked away and terminated their project. So that's when I became involved with the property. So I, I've been working for Mainland for 15 years. I've been overseeing the development of infill residential properties in Nashville. We've developed apartments, condominiums, townhomes, and mixed-use properties. We've built homes priced from about $175,000 to over $2.7 million. We're committed to homeownership. We believe that it builds community, fosters stability, and is a gateway to generating wealth. Homeownership is good for our cities. We're acutely aware of the challenges in delivering attainably-priced homes in urban and transitional suburban environments. But we have the ability and the desire to develop this property with quality homes at as reasonable prices as we can. So when we first engaged with the city back in April of this year, we specifically sought to utilize the current zoning with no further changes. That resulted in us formulating a vision for 32 townhomes, accessed by a shared drive from North Gallaher View Road. The homes, we were hoping to anticipate to offering them in about, in the $400,000 price range for sale. We were advised that the first step in the approval process would be to remove this now-defunct Memory Care Plan designation. So that action was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission on August 14. But shortly thereafter, the West Hills Community Association and Councilman Roberto suggested that rather than removing the encumbrance that's locking us into the old zoning code, we could secure entitlements for our townhomes by amending that plan designation via the planned residential process. We've spent the last few months looking into that. Unfortunately, after numerous conversations and a lot of help from councilmen, the planning department, legal department, it appears that utilizing planned residential-
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Goodness gracious. Sorry. Thought I had five minutes.
Okay. Next person signed up to speak in favor of this is Ellen Zaviska. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Ellen Zaviska, 3118 Fairview Street, speaking on behalf of Yes Knoxville in support of more housing and transportation choices in our city. And I want to speak in favor of this zoning change, which, as was just said, will remove really what is an out-of-date vestige of our previous zoning code. We have come to these meetings in the past in support of both subsidized affordable housing and also market-rate housing. And we believe there's a need and a space for both of those in our city, because there are people at all income levels who want to live in multifamily housing, not just those eligible for subsidized housing. As we all know and have discussed at great length tonight, Knoxville is in need of more varieties of housing, and multifamily is the most efficient and sustainable way to provide that in our city. And if any location seems suitable for multifamily housing, I think this seems like one. We've got proximity to a major intersection, near commercial development, access to CAT, access to a greenway for walkability and bikeability. In short, I would say that if this isn't an appropriate location for multifamily housing, I'm not sure there is one in the city. So for those reasons, I encourage you to approve this change. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move to two people who've signed up to speak in opposition to this item. First is Larry Silverstein, and then Lee Hume after that. You'll have up to three minutes to address council.
Thank you. Larry Silverstein, 7808 Sheffield Drive, 37909. I'm speaking on behalf of the West Hills Community Association and the adjacent homeowners to the property at 962 North Gallaherview Road. We request that you deny the request to remove previously approved planned District C designation from this property. We wrote to council on August 26th, when this item was on your September 2nd agenda. We forwarded that letter and updated, updated it on November 24th yesterday and submitted it for the record tonight. Removing the C designation removes the requirement that the parcel be developed under planned residential zoning. If the C is removed, the property will be developed under RN4. Oddly, in order to build what the developer hopes to build, it requires a variance from the RN4 regulations. Planned Residential is the better and more appropriate zoning district for these reasons. While Planned Residential and RN4 allow the same uses, Planned Residential requires special use review and approval for all development. RN4 requires special use review and approval for only some development. This means, under Planned Residential, there is a public process and public input for all future development plans. This is not true for RN4. Planning commissioners were not provided the correct information about this key difference. The planned districts, including Planned Residential, were designed for prominent or sensitive properties. This property is exactly that. The description of the Planned Residential District states that it is intended to provide optional methods of land development which encourage more imaginative solutions to environmental design problems, and that the quote, "development be compatible with the surrounding and adjacent districts," Article 4, 3.1A. When this property was rezoned in September 2024 from RN1 to RN4, both the Planning Commission and city council kept the C designation in place to make good on the promise of careful planning and public input. Please keep the C designation in place and deny the request to remove the C designation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next person's Lee Hume. Please come to the-
I'd like to yield my time to-
I'm sorry, if people have to sign up ahead of time. So you can speak, and that's the council's rules, so. Thank you. You can speak or you don't have to speak, but other people need to sign up ahead of
My name is Lee Hume, 6902 Heverhill Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee. Basically, my comments are, I'm going to be very brief, that I'm in total agreement with what Mr. Silverstein just said as far as that we prefer to preserve the planned residential overlay for the benefit of the neighborhood and having public input on this project. Up until recently, Mr. Lennon and his company were in agreement that that seemed to be a good option as far as approaching this property and the development. There's been a lot of confusion with, between planning staff and the law department and on how exactly using planning, planned residential could be applied here. Apparently, there was a resolution recently within the past 24 hours maybe on exactly how that would work. So our position as a neighborhood and the neighbors who live in the vicinity is to preserve the planned residential overlay so that we can still have an input and others that are in that area can also have some input on what the plans are about and how it may or may not impact everybody that's in that area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, council. That concludes people who've signed up to this item. Councilmember Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not support removing the C, however I do support the developer applying to revise the development plan to develop this under planned residential. I understand in doing that that planning will review the transition rules, and I am sure they will also look at the fact that this property is currently in the medium-density sector and in the medium, sort of sector plan and for the one-year plan as well. The C is the previously planned district, okay, which was RP1. This per, this developer can develop this in two paths, one in RN4, one under the previously planned designation. What I'm going to suggest is that the better option is for them to develop this under planned residential, and I'm asking you to not remove the C because they can develop this under planned residential and do exactly what they want to do. If you go through the RN4 process, they would have to, and they've done some of these things, rezone to RN4, which they did, remove the C, which they're trying to do today, get a variance, which is going through BZA now, and get a special use. Or you can amend the development plan and begin doing this project, and that's why planned residential is important. So I want to highlight what we heard just a minute ago. We heard the description in the 2019 zoning code of planned residential because keep in mind, that's what we're talking about. We're getting rid of the old plan, the old development options that they had. It says in part, "The planned development district may permit a greater mixing of land uses not easily accomplished by the application of basic district boundaries or a framework of coordinating the development of land with the provision of an adequate roadway system or essential utilities and public services. In return, the planned development district provisions require a high standard for the protection and preservation of environmentally sensitive lands, well-planned living, working, and shopping environments, and assurance of adequate and timely provisions of essential utilities." If you like looking for options for housing, you love planned residential. If you like drawing outside the lines and being creative, you love planned residential. And so that's why I'm asking not to remove the C because they can develop this, townhouses just the way they want to now. And I wanted to ask someone who does this all the time, Mr. Mullins, if he might come down and just talk to us a little bit about what we're trying to remove here, which is planned residential as an option.
Ben Mullins, 550 West Main Street. You have, I guess you have a specific question about planned residential for me?
Yeah, could you just talk about the benefits of development under planned residential? I know the county has planned residential, the city doesn't. We got rid of it in 2020, which was a mistake if you wanted to have more options for development. But that being said, could you talk to us a little bit about your experience with-
Yeah, I think the planned residential zone can be a very flexible zone. It is the most popular zone for residential development in the county. Most of the rezoning you see are planned residential because it allows you to take into consideration certain environmental constraints on the property that a normal zone that has dimensional standards don't. I think it's an excellent tool in the toolbox. I don't know anything about this application. I'm not taking a position on this application one way or the other, but it is something I think that could be valuable to consider allowing planned zones to be implemented in the city zoning ordinance as well.
Thank you very much. And I know you have nothing to do with this, but I just wanted you to comment a little bit on planned residential.
Sure, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, so my ask is simple, which is to join me in voting down the change of removing the C. Leave this option available, have the developer go through planned residential, which is what the neighborhood wants, which the developer was trying to do, and we're running a little low on time to be able to get that accomplished. So I wanted to just ask that we do that here. And then the final thing that I was going to do is ask Mr. Zaitz, who's a neighbor, to come down and give us his statement because he wasn't able to sign up in time to speak today. So could you tell us about your experience in the neighborhood and this development?
Councilmember Roberto. I think that would have to wait till your next opportunity or another council member with your five minutes being up.
Don't we usually get to run when, you know, can't somebody speak while my time is still up? My time wasn't up when I said that. I just think he should speak. He's a neighbor. William Zaitz. I think someone else might call on you, Mr. Zaitz. Thank you.
Mr. Zaitz, wait until there's enough time and the councilman calls on you.
I can say within a minute, it's not going to take long time.
Just, just, let's, I'm trying to just follow the rules the council imposes.
We'll call on you. We'll call on you. Stay. Sit there and stay.
Who's, I'm not sure who was up next. Vice Mayor Smith?
I have a few questions for Director Brooks. Councilman Roberto has referred to planned development, or excuse me, planned residential. Is that in the zoning code now?
Nobody's working.
Pause the time, please. That's not fair.
Mr. Johnson, would you pause the time?
Ms. Brooks, go to the podium.
Here we go.
Here we go.
Sorry about that. No, planned residential is not a zone in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I've got a few more. So Councilman Roberto, I appreciate your desire for that. It's not an option right now, so I want to stop referring to that, please. The second thing is, would developing, there was some, there was some confusion around whether this is developing this property, if the C is removed, would it still require going through the special use process? Is that the case?
For the RN4 zone, which is just currently zoned, so if you're removed to the C, it would still have to go through the special use process because it's not, more than nine units.
Thank you. Okay, so there's public input for that as well. Is there, I'm just curious, how many C designations have been removed since recode?
I think approximately 12 have been removed since 2020.
All right, so this is not a one-off thing. This has happened 12 times since recode. Okay, thank you. I'm curious, I mean, I kid a little bit, but Councilman Roberto has referred to planned residential quite a bit as an ode to a previous zoning. Planned development, I mean, that assumes that there's support for this type of development, if only we just use that process. And so planned development is not apples to apples, but it is a functional tool to use for developments that don't fit anything neatly, but the community can get behind. So I guess my question for the developer and for Mr. Hume or Silverstein is, why haven't you all discussed planned development, which is a tool now?
I, we did not. We, we looked for what we were advised was the simplest process. The, the BZA variance that Councilman Roberto referenced, we've already crossed that off the list. So we've slowed down significantly to explore planned residential, but we did not explore planned development. Sorry.
Are you familiar with that? Okay, that's all right. There's just like, there's no deduction for not knowing that. So just, all right. All right, Mr. Silverstein, I'm curious your thoughts on planned development for this.
I could not hear the question.
Yeah, you, and thank you for that. You are often critical of us not speaking into the mic, so thank you.
Thank you.
Evidence here. What do you feel about planned development? Because even planned residential assumes that there's some amount of support for this, if only using the correct zoning. So planned development is a tool that is used to not change the underlying zoning, but to do something that the neighborhood benefits from and agrees to is a good thing. So what are your thoughts on planned development for this property?
For planned residential, not planned development, planned residential.
No, planned development.
There is no planned development.
I think it's, I think it's the other way around. There is no planned residential, there is only planned development. And if you're not familiar with it, it's fine. I'm just curious what your thoughts are if you are familiar with it.
I'm not, I don't know anything about planned development specifically. Planned residential is what we're talking about.
Understood. That's an acceptable answer. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm just, I'm looking for some genuine dialogue or meet in the middle. I'm not trying to insert planned development today. That takes a while. It's a different process. My point is, it feels like that could be a process that folks could be guided to as opposed to zoning types that don't exist anymore or just meeting loggerheads with, with this item. So thank you for answering my questions, everybody, as fun as that was.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yeah, so we have voted, we've had 12 planned residentials. Please don't confuse it with planned development, which is unicorn zoning, and I'm not going to talk about, waste my time on that. Scratch that from your heads. Sorry, Council, Vice Mayor Smith. They'd have to give us something to get that, and I don't know what they give us. There's already a greenway there. So anyway, I'm just going to talk about planned residential. It is from the old zoning code, and we have had 12 come before this body since recode passed, and 11 of the 12 passed unanimously. Mr. Mullins, can you make your way forward if you're still here? I'd like to ask you a question. We're not paying you either. You're off the clock. How about that? I don't know whose clock you're on, but not mine. I ain't got any money. So anyway, planned residential, we've had all of these that have come forward, hang with me for just one moment, and we've removed them unanimously with the exception of one that was in North Shore Town Center, and everything around it was under this giant master plan. So I'm like, okay, that, maybe that's why we kept that one. And I did talk to Taylor Forster last week and this week. Of the 11 that we've passed, I'm just curious, did you represent any of these that came forward? Would you remember? I can start throwing out addresses if that helps.
I believe at least two, maybe more.
So you came forward and represented people and we removed C designations. Thanks. That's all I needed. Yeah, okay, cool. So we've removed them, we've removed them, and we removed them because like in this case, this is a property owner that had a property that they came and they paid a fee, Ms. Brooks, correct? They would have paid fees and went through the planned residential process. It would have cost them money, and it was tied to a specific project in our old code, and then that company went bankrupt. And so in the meantime, there's a new sector plan and a new zoning code, and we're going to handcuff them to the old code because they were so unfortunate as to be in business with a company whose CEO died? And I'm like, I don't know how I feel about that. And I guess the, the neighbor who lives next door, I said I would, nobody else has called you back, so you come back to the podium if you'd like, and I'll let you have a few minutes to speak. But they've had a well-established plan that they've been floating around, so I guess my question is, what do you want different from what they've proposed? Have you seen what they've proposed? It's a ring of townhouses around a retention pond, is my understanding. What do you want to see differently?
Yes, I, we're not-
Oh, name an address for the record.
My name is William Zaitz, and I reside at 1556 Robinson Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We're not opposed to development. We understand that it's going to get developed, but from what I understand is, on September 17, 2024, we voted, city council voted, on an narrow margin of four to five to rezon from RN1 to RN4. That decision was made only because the proposal was limited to 23 townhomes. RN4 was already a major shift from low-density residential to medium-density residential, allowing townhomes and multifamily. With that being said, the decision was made on the basis of what was already, what was discussed, and now we're pushing for more. When does it stop? You know, I understand that, you know, they, the code is an old code, but as Andrew Roberto spoke, that it was something that worked, and it gives the ability to work together. And we're not opposed to working together. We want to work together, but we just want to make sure that it's done within what the zoning law is, not making changes that are drastic.
Okay, thank you. I still have a minute, so I'm just going to say when RN, I cannot remember the conversation. I appreciate it, and I guess someone else can call on you if, if they want to say something. So what I heard is you would like for it to be 24 units. They're proposing 32. You can correct me if I take the wrong interpretation from what you just said.
No, that is not what I was saying. What I was saying was that removing the C condition now would break the basis of the original council decision and open the door for far greater density that was ever agreed that this is part of a slow push towards- that this is part of a slow push towards higher density that is taking our community in the wrong direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm just going to go back to my original statement in my limited time, which is, I don't feel right in that time after time, we've said, hey, you had a deal that fell apart based on a landholder, somebody who was going to develop something, and we're like, we're going to handcuff you to the, handcuff you to the old plan when there's new zoning in place, and my time is-
Okay, next person signed up, I mean, not signed up, whose light is on is Amelia Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had a lot of the similar questions that were raised tonight in some of my discussions. I was curious why an amendment to the plan under planned residential wasn't the preferred way of moving forward. It seemed like it would be more straightforward than the, getting the variance, getting the RN4, which has already happened. And so, I had a couple of questions, but to, to, to the other point about us passing these unanimously, what I've told, you know, community members is these have, these planned residential designation removals have come before us, and I've voted in favor of it without much thought, knowing that the zoning would revert back to its original zoning. This one caught my attention because there was a recent change to RN4 zoning, and I also cannot remember the conversation then. But I imagine we would have been aware of the planned residential C designation in place and thinking that, that there would be some limitations. So, I'm a little concerned about the process, but I want to ask, since planned residential is not in our zoning code any longer, and these projects are grandfathered in, what guidance does planning have, planning staff have, when amending these plans?
Director Brooks, can you find a mic that works? There you go.
Councilmember, we, we're guided by the transition rules, that it's 1.4G, so for previously approved planned districts. So, that speaks to what was in effect at the time of approval. And so, if anybody wants to amend one of those, they have to go through the special use process as a current code. And so, then we would use those standards for the special use process.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. I had another question, but I didn't write it down. Having a better understanding of what that process is, because a lot of the discussion has been around whether the steps moving forward would be the same under an RN4 as under amending the plan under planned residential. And I do hear the residents that there's a little bit more oversight and a little bit more opportunity for public input in the planned residential process. I also hear from the most recent speaker concerns about the density on the piece of property continuing to increase. There are other lights, so I'm going to pause. I got my questions answered, but I, I still have some, some questions, so I will pause there.
Okay, Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lennon, may I ask you a few questions?
Yes.
In my listening to this conversation, and please tell me, someone, if I'm incorrect, we are discussing the process that you need, but we're not discussing the end product, like nobody has an issue with the density at the end.
I, well, what I'm asking for today is to remove the designation so I can follow the current zo, zoning, the RN4 zoning. We have a separate application under the special use process that we began and paused. That process would then be the special use approval for eight, for 32 townhomes. I think it would be disingenuous of me to say there aren't people here who wish it were fewer. There are definitely some folks here that I've talked to at West Hills who wish there were fewer units than that. But that density, as I understand it, will be determined through the special use process that we have started but not completed at the, right? So, there's a public process for that at the Planning Commission. And if I misspoke, Ms. Brooks, please correct me.
Sorry, my questions aren't clear, very clear. I'm very, very tired. I guess I'm trying to figure out the disconnect between, it sounds like Councilman Roberto was saying you can achieve what you want to with what he's suggesting. Why do you feel that that's not best for you? How can you get shovel in the ground?
I have, I don't mean to point fingers, but I'm going to point fingers. I am getting different advice from Council Roberto than I'm getting from the Planning Department. I'm just trying to find my way through here. So, the Planning Department has told me in writing that if I go via planned residential, the low-density sector plan that was in effect in 2016 and 2019 would be the one that governs. Councilman Roberto, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but your assertion is, the medium-density residential sector plan that is in effect now should be the one that governs. The difference between those, right, is, is, under the low-density, it's a six units per acre max. I don't know what the maximum density is under medium-density residential, but I'm hoping to do eight units per acre, and that's allowed under the current. So, my, I've understood that, remove the designation, I can move forward. Working under planned residential, it's something that I'm getting mixed information about, and I had 120-day clock since the Planning Commission, right, approved us. I deferred as long as I could.
Okay.
And that's why I'm here now.
Thank you. Procedure-wise, can we extend that period of time? I would like him to have accurate, good information that he can get to work.
No, that's the problem.
Okay, we can't do that.
Honestly, I'm, would like to get, move forward with my project.
Sure, sure.
I have a clear path in one direction. I have an unclear path in the other. I would like to take the clear path.
Thank you. Councilman Roberto, if he's feeling that one path isn't going to get him to where he wants, and I understand that you really like planned, not residential, but the other one.
Planned residential is right.
residential, I understand.
Okay.
You had it. You had it right.
So, are we getting stuck on the process? I want him to be able to get started.
Right, me too, and I was hoping he'd be able to get started sooner than that. So, to answer your question, this, this property is currently in the medium-density sector plan and one-year plan. RP1 allows him to do 24 units per acre. He can do all of what he wants to do currently. Planning, if they want to, tell him, hey, when we're telling you what you can and can't do, we're going to look back in 2016, even though the transition rules don't tell him to do that. So, they're going to do a report that says, even though it's currently medium, we're going to tell you you have to do low, and we're going to deny, we're going to recommend you not approve it. They can still, Planning Commission can still approve it. This council makes a decision about the interpretation of this rule. And so, what I'm asking you is to let this man develop under planned residential and put this to bed so that he can do exactly what he wants to do, and that neighborhood can get the process they want, and don't remove the C. And I've tried to explain what the benefits of planned residential are, because although it doesn't exist currently, the C lets it do, lets them do this. So, it doesn't exist currently.
Councilmember Roberto, that, I'm just trying to go-
Well, that was her time.
Yeah, I know. Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, then, thank you.
Okay, next is Lauren, Councilmember Ryder?
I just, Councilmember Roberto, I just heard you say that the planned residential plan will allow him to do 24 units per acre, times four. Ms. Brooks, if we do not remove the C designation tonight, that man can do 24 units per acre. But if we remove the C designation tonight, he can do eight units per acre. I'm trying to figure out what we're advocating for here, because that somehow does not math out.
Yeah, so, this is how we have read. I'm going to go back to the transition rules, one that this council passed when the code was adopted, so 1.4G. And I'm going to read it to you, and I apologize for that, but I think it's, it's helpful to understand what we've been dealing with. So, as of the effective date of this code, all previously approved planned districts, and it lists them out, remain in effect and are subject to all plans, regulations, and/or conditions of their approval. And so, the way that this has been handled, and we've had conversations with, you know, city laws as well, about this is, when, because we're, we have to look at, we have to use the special use standards, and it does say that the development must be in line with the sector plan and one-year plan. And so, the sector plan and one-year plan designation at the time that this, before this code was adopted was LDR, which limits it to six dwelling units per acre. And so, our staff would utilize those plans to guide our recommendation. And Councilmember Roberto is correct that the Planning Commission can, can go in a different direction, they often do, and can approve a higher density than that. But that is what we would use to guide our recommendation.
You were saying six units per acre.
Based on the LDR, which was the plan in effect at the time.
Councilwoman Roberto is saying 24 units per acre. This is grossly different. I find it wild that the people from West Hills are advocating for 24 units per acre. Mr. Swanson, it's wild, because we're only talking about 32 for four acres total. Mr. Swanson, is it 24 units per acre? Is it six? Is it eight? Because honestly, what I just heard from Ms. Brooks is, this dude needs to roll the dice and stick with the C designation, and hopefully the Planning Commission will found in his favor and get him up to the, I think, eight he wants. Sorry, folks, I know it's late, but-
Christine, Christina McGrath has been working on-
Other way. I'll be very bossy tonight, so sorry.
Christina McGrath from our office has been working on this, been working on it with everybody involved in this, and her interpretation is consistent with that of planning.
Six per acre if the C designation stays in place. I, I mean, we can call it process, we can call it whatever.
But, but she also understands that if that goes to planning, they will get the recommendation based on the transition rules, but the commission does not have to follow that recommendation, as they often do not, particularly in light of the fact that this is now zoned differently. It's now medium.
So, we're going to-
Am I right about that?
So, we don't know what the Planning Commission's going to do, because, well, for example, we know one planning commissioner is about to change, and the, we don't know what the commission's recommendation is. So, we're basically saying to this person, I'm sorry you got into business with somebody who went bankrupt and died, or died and then went bankrupt, whichever order it happened in 2016, but that's what happened to you, and tough luck, so sorry. We've rezoned the whole city, but you're stuck with that, and maybe they'll find in your favor if we keep the C designation. Because I would love for Councilwoman Roberto to help us understand why it's 24 when the Law Department's not saying that and the Planning Department's not saying that. And so, I don't mean to be rude about it, but we need to know to be able to make the decision.
Happy to answer the question. If you go to the 2019 zoning code, which is what we're talking about, in section 3.1, item E, or section E, it talks about the population density that's allowed in RP1, and this is a quote, "RP1 district allowable population density shall be 24 dwelling units per, shall be 24 unit, dwelling units per net acre." That's the maximum allowable that you can have. Now, he can't do 24 units per acre, okay? I'm never saying that. I'm saying that the zone allows you up to 24 acres, 24 units per acre. He's going to be limited-
RP1 allows up to 24.
Yeah, RP1, exactly. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So, he will have to manage the, the topography as well as the allowable density and the medium-density sector plan. He can develop this, let's let him.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ryder. Councilmember Parker?
I had a different question, but now I have a question for Councilmember Roberto. What, I'm, I'm missing your argument around the application of the 2016 sector plan. Are you just, would, do you not feel that council would need to pass something to give that direction and clarity to planning staff to use updated sector plans as a guidance?
Yeah, happy to answer that. The sector plan is already medium-density now. We've already done that. The same process that he would have done to ask to go to medium-density for the sector plan and the one-year plan, we've already voted on. That's already happened. So, all I'm saying is, he's not limited. When we did the transition rules, we wrote the transition rules to make sure that everybody was previously planned, kept the same rights they had before, and they didn't get special rights, and they didn't lose any rights. They could develop this under RP1 in the past by changing the development plan, which they can do. There's a process in the transition rules that allow you to do it special use. They could also change the sector plan and the one-year plan, which has already happened. So, what I'm saying is, he's not limited. He can go ahead and develop this now, and if we approve this and deny the C, I think he will be able to do it. Thank you.
But it seems that the way that the planning staff is interpreting the transition plan is that they have to rely on the old sector plan, not the current sector plan. So, it seems like they need more clarification from council. Through some sort of legislative action, not just tonight's decision.
Or we could just say that our interpretation is this.
Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you. I'm not a lawyer, didn't play one on TV, didn't slay at a Holiday Inn Express, but I'd like to go home to my own bed. I guess my confusion, first of all, welcome to our city, and I'm sorry, this has been such a total conundrum and a very difficult situation through all the time that you've owned it, with all the plans that have come before and, and the different business partnerships. I understand the neighborhood's desire to know what is going to be there. And every time we do these rezonings, most people say, I'm fine with it if you change the zoning, as long as they build exactly what they told us, what they told us at council they're going to build. That's the fear of changing any of the zoning. The flip side of this is, it sounds to me like we're only here because we flat-out ran out of time, and now we're between a rock and a hard place. It's either we pull this off, I mean, based on what I've heard, it can't be postponed anymore, so there's not two more weeks to get it all figured out. It's dead if we do nothing, correct? Okay, for all intents and purposes, it's dead. I don't care what they are saying. We're at the point where you can't go forward anymore with the process as it is, because it cannot be postponed. This, this city council must make a decision tonight to either vote this up or down, or vote for something else to, in order for this process to continue, is what I'm understanding. So, with that said, I think we're all pretty confused. But I'm not in the sense that you want to build 32 units. The topography doesn't matter, the square footage, I mean, the, the size of it. There's hillside protection, there's all these other things that are going to restrict how much- how much of the property you can actually develop. Am I correct? I'm, I'm glad you and I can make eye contact over that chair, and you don't have to get back up here, but, but I think that's what I'm hearing. In a perfect world, this would have been a lot easier for you, and for the neighborhood, for this to have all played out much more smoothly, but here's where we are. My, my fear at this point is, one of the things that we keep hearing from time to time, justified or not, is that it's hard to do business in Knoxville, in the city of Knoxville. I think this would be an example of why. Because it's confusing, and you've gotten, as, as an investor in this community, you've gotten mixed signals about what you can and cannot do. And it sounds to me like we have lots of people offering lots, lots of opinion, and either we decide tonight, or if we did what Councilman Roberto asked for, it would go back to planning, and we don't know what they would decide. Is this my general summation of where we are after an hour of discussion?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's all I want to know. I want to be clear what my choices are, because it's about time to vote on something.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder, there's not a motion on the floor. Councilmember Thomas, and then Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes, I just have one question of Mr. Lennon. This will be a slight interlude in the discussion, but, Mr. Lennon, how much do you propose that these units would be sold for? Do you have a ballpark? Would you contain yourself?
In the $400,000, in the $400,000 range, the units that we have on our current plan are either 1,464 square feet, or they're 1,711 square feet. They're both three-bedroom, two-bath units.
Right.
What I'm seeing in the market is about $250 a square foot pricing seems to be where the market is. That's what we're working towards. Honestly, we've got a lot of work to do after we get entitlement about budgets and costs, but as I look at where the market is, that's where I think those units price out.
Okay, fair enough. $400,000 a unit? Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I voted against the rezoning last time, and went back and since then, watched every video from Planning Commission, and I re-watched, followed a playbook out of Councilwoman Ryder's MO, and watched our meetings again. And I think Ms. Aviska made a comment earlier about this can't, this kind of, this type of medium-density on a corridor, and there was a lot of conversation earlier tonight about that. Can't go here and allow for homeownership, whether it's $250 a square foot, or $200 square foot, or $300 a square foot. Then what, what are, we're kidding ourselves. There is a very clear path if you remove the C designation for development. So, back to Ms. Fugit's inquiry, line of questioning, that's clear. With respect to Councilman Roberto's guidance to go back to planning for a Planned Residential that doesn't exist anymore for hopeful alignment among council, planning staff, Planning Commission, back to council, I don't, I don't think there's anything clear about that. And I actually think this is a good example of confusing ourselves out of doing something very clear in front of us. And it is on a corridor, it's on the outskirts of the neighborhood, not in the interior. This is an area where we collectively should be supportive of this type of housing. So, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve has been made and seconded. A bunch of lights went off, so seeing no further lights on. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? I think the motion carried.
Let's do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Smith. Councilwoman Singh. Councilwoman Thomas. Councilwoman Fugit. Councilwoman Helsley. Councilwoman McKenzie. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Ryder. Councilwoman Roberto.
Oh.
Mayor, the vote is seven in favor, two against.
Okay, motion carries. Phew, all right. Public forum?
Second reading.
That was, that was his first reading?
No, sorry, yeah, we need to do this again.
Okay. Okay, public forum. Everyone will have up to three minutes to address council. First person is Austin Weinberger. Is Austin Weinberger present?
No, he's not.
Okay, next person is Edward Smith. Is Edward Smith present?
Present.
Okay, Mr. Smith, please state your name and address for the record. You'll have up to three minutes to address council.
Edward Smith, 455 Laurel Ridge Lane, Knoxville, Tennessee. Go Vols. Wow, that was something. I'm here, and I'm very privileged to be here, and I'm here mainly to thank you all for the support that you give to an organization that I have come to love and support for the last 14 years, REM, Remote Area Medical. Stan Brock created this place in Knoxville in 1985, and REM has provided free dental, vision, healthcare to all who come to their clinics, whether the clinic is hosted here in Knoxville, or somewhere else, or outside the country. They do a fantastic job with taking care of people, and recently, they reached a fantastic milestone. Their 1,000,000th patient that they've served, pretty, pretty spectacular. They're located nine miles south of this city in Rockford, and their headquarters is a beehive of activity, if you've ever been there. And I highly recommend you going and getting a tour. They are in the process of planning, preparing, executing, and recovering from over 200 events that they run each year. The clinics range in size from small telehealth sessions to dental and vision weekend clinics held in Walmart parking lots, using high-tech configured RVs for dental and vision, to full large clinics that do dental, vision, well-being for folks throughout the U.S. Last year in Knoxville, the one they ran, was over 1,000 individuals that they serviced. On any given weekend, REM is delivering as many as four full-scale clinics and three hybrid telehealth clinics simultaneously in different locations across the country, all free of charge to whoever comes to see them. REM's small, staff is fantastic in what they do, and they have hundreds of volunteers, and they service anybody who shows up. What's nice about it is, all the places they go, they have hosts that provide their people, their volunteers with the services that they need to help the people in the town. Knoxville provides the Jacobs Building. And we own two hotels, my family and I, and we supply the support for them to be here. We host them, give them rooms, and give them food. I just wanted to give you some statistics, because I have two seconds left.
Mr. Smith, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Next person signed up to speak is Mary Brown.
She's in New York with REM, doing an event up there, and couldn't be here tonight.
Thank you. Next person is Neil Smith.
In lieu of time, my son will pass, so you can go home.
Next person is Vivian Shipe.
Vivian Shipe, 3615 MLK Knoxville, 37919. I'm here tonight to ask about next steps. We in the community have been meeting, and will continue to meet over the coming months in community groups, neighborhood association meetings, and in people's homes all over the city and county. People are inviting us to come and sit in their community and listen to them. We have held three meetings so far. The subject of these food and fellowship meetings are to gather the attendees' ideas of what they want to see happen in Chihuahua Park. There have been several questions raised in the first three meetings, and I'm sure more will be raised as the meetings progress. I wanted to share with you the concerns raised to date about unlocking Chihuahua Park and the future economic development of the east side. Please know that there is an open invitation to all council members, current and future, to come and sit at the table and learn what your constituents are thinking and feeling. These are the questions from those you represent. When will the fair be given an extended contract to be at the park longer than a one-year deal? What will happen to the old Muse Building? Can it be used as a community or performing arts center? Why are we not able to book events with the current management now running the park? Who will the new management company be when the current contract ends? The mayor promised $20 million to develop the park. Was that just a carrot-stick act to get the public land sold, or will the word be kept? How much of the 2026 budget will reflect the money's promise to show its East Knoxville's time? The mayor promised a new council. When will the East Knoxville Advisory Council be set up, and how and who will select the members of this council? What exactly needs to be done to remove the locks from the south side of Chihuahua Park, and when will this be done? Why is the information and wording used about Chihuahua Park on the city website not as up-to-date as other parks? Why can't there be a farmer's market held on the south side of the park since it lies in a food desert, and many can't get to Market Square to get fresh food? What about setting up a playground area on the south side of the park for the children to play while developing long-term projects? As other questions arise over the coming months, we will return and share those also. Thank you.
Next person is Crystal Flack. Ms. Flack, you'll have up to three minutes to address council.
Crystal Flack, 50592, zip code 37950. Good evening, everyone. On November 11, 2025, the city council unanimously approved allocating $100,000 from the city's unassigned fund balance to address critical food shortages caused by delays in SNAP benefits due to the federal government shutdown. United Way of Greater Knoxville matched that amount, bringing the total to $200,000 in emergency funding, distributed within days to nine local organizations. Your response was swift, your response was urgent. You are commended for taking immediate action to address a temporary federal delay as a crisis it was. Now let me direct your attention to another food crisis, one that isn't temporary, one that doesn't come from a government shutdown, one that has existed for years. Forty-three percent of African-Americans in Knoxville live at or below the poverty line. That means 43% of black people in this city struggle every single day with putting food on the table. That means 43% are making distressing decisions, food or rent, food or utilities, food or medicine. These devastating decisions aren't due to a federal delay, but because of systemic economic inequities that this council has the power and obligation to address. Census tracks 67 and 68 in East Knoxville. Historically, black neighborhoods report medium household incomes of approximately $35,000 and $15,000 respectively. Yet according to 2024 HUD data, the city calculates affordable housing using the Knoxville metro area median income, which is $91,000 for a family of four. That's not affordable housing, that's economic displacement by policy. These families face the same food insecurity you had responded to on November 11, 2025. What's the difference? The food crisis for African-Americans did not start with a government shutdown, and it didn't end when the federal government reopened two days after you did, your decision to commit $100,000 to United Way of Greater Knoxville. SNAP benefits have resumed. The food crises in the black community is chronic, our crisis is systemic, and our crisis has been ignored. Your legal obligations are clear. Tennessee Code annotated subsection 6-56-201 requires you to adopt a budget that serves the entire city. The Fourteenth Amendment commands no state shall deny to any person with its, within its jurisdiction, the equal protection of the laws. This isn't suggestion, it is the supreme law of this land. Why does a temporary delay warrant emergency action? Well, 43% of poverty, black poverty, does not. My time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you, councilmembers. That concludes people signed up to speak at public forum, and without objection, this meeting is adjourned.[1792.11]